Okay, well, I'm off duty.
Oh, you're jealous.
What should I do? Or maybe just want to move.
I know.
All these cheap.
That's one.
Washer.
It's one around the end.
Do you have any? If I touch, if I touch anything.
I don't need to.
Um, you don't have to sit back.
Would like to call to order the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Budget Workshop for May 21st, 2019. Welcome, everyone. It seems like we only just left each other a few minutes ago from our meeting last night, but it's good to see everybody here this afternoon. And we will start out with an overview of the 2020 budget process, and so I'll turn the floor over to you ladies.
Alrighty, thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Kristin Jones, Budget and Performance Manager. Beside me is...
Susan Farrington, Finance Director.
Lauren Tiara, Budget Analyst.
So, it's going to be a group effort in tackling this evening's proposed budget presentation. Feel free to stop us along the way if you have any questions. It can be as informal as you would like to make it. But before we get started, I did just want to thank all of our departments, the board, obviously, and all of county management staff in what I consider a successful budget year so far. So, I think it's gone pretty smooth. So, just, yeah, I just wanted to say thanks. And following a similar format as in the past, we hit our major highlights with our revenues and our expenditures. I will say that the majority of our slides at the beginning of the presentation matched the budget book, and I reference page numbers throughout the prelim book for you guys to follow. So with that being said, the budget book was compiled prior to the recommendation of the additional tax increase. So, the beginning slides don't reference the tax increase, but the end will, and then we can talk about proposed projects and funding mechanisms for that. So, I did just want to reference that before we got started. Alright, so, just an agenda for how the evening is going to take place. So, you will hear from myself and Susan and Lauren regarding FY '20 budget. We did have a change in the agenda. So, the CBB was originally slated to go after us. Now, Kannapolis City Schools is presenting right after us. Following them is the Economic Development Corporation, or the EDC, then the Cabarrus Health Alliance, and then we'll pick up with the Convention and Visitors Bureau and Cabarrus County Schools. So, we have a pretty packed night. And then we will recess to May 23rd, this Thursday, where we'll hear from Carolina Farm Stewardship. So, Lomax Farm, Rowan Cabarrus Community College, and then our three fire districts that are proposing tax increases this year, which are Mount Pleasant, Midland, and Flow Store. And then we will recess to June 3rd for further discussion if needed at the work session. Any questions so far? Alrighty, let's dive right in. So, I typically always present just a high-level summary of all of our annually adopted funds. So, that's what you're seeing on this slide with the budget book reference there. You can refer to page 50 for further information and detail. So, our general fund, which is our main operating fund for FY '20, we are proposing a general fund operating budget of $269,805,596, which is a $14 million increase over our adopted budget last year around this time. So, or 5.26% increase. For a while there, we were going from the revised budget to the proposed budget, and the revised budget is accounting for all those revisions that we're making throughout the year with budget amendments. And the biggest is obviously our 15% fund balance transfer. So, I no longer go during this presentation from revised budget to proposed because I think it's a little misleading because it's not at similar points in time. So, I do reference going from adopted to proposed. So, we will hit, you know, what those major increases are for all of the funds as we go further into the PowerPoint presentation, so I won't go into specifics yet, but for...
Kristin, I'm sorry to interrupt. But I'm on page 50, and I'm not seeing that, that group of numbers, so what am I missing?
Let me check.
Is anybody else? Okay. I thought it might be just me. I just wanted to make sure I can follow along.
Sure. So, the budget book, so this does have all of our annual funds listed here. The budget book does go from revised to proposed. So, it is a little confusing there, but you see at the very top, we're going over our general fund, proposed FY '20 adopted budget, our landfill...
The light blue lines give you those categories listed along there, and then at the bottom of each one gives you the total.
The total, right.
So, this is a little bit more information than this table up here.
Right, yep. It's more broken down by line items there with our revenue categories.
Sorry, I'm still on, I'm still on the phone. So, say that again?
Do you see the blue categories that show the funds that we're talking about?
Light blue with general fund, landfill, 911 emergency.
So, if you come all the way to the bottom.
Okay, I'm good. Got it.
Keep us on our toes. It's okay.
I know. I was like, oh, man. Okay. So, the landfill budget for FY '20 is proposed at $1,403,508, which is an increase of $230,937 from our FY '19 adopted budget. Our 911 emergency telephone system actually is showing a decrease from adopted to proposed for FY '20. That's just based on state estimates that we get from the 911 board. So, for FY '20, the proposed budget there is $760,240. So, the arena and event center FY '20 budget is proposed at $1,731,880, or an increase of around $83,000. Our self-insured funds are our health insurance and dental insurance fund is budgeted for FY '20 around $11.5 million, which is a slight increase of around $218,000 over our FY '19 adopted budget. For workers' comp and, or workers' compensation in our liability fund for FY '20 is proposed at $2.3 million, which is around an $80,000 increase in that fund. And then our fire districts is proposed, the FY '20 proposed budget is around $4.7 million, which is an increase of around $238,000 for FY '20. So, if you follow the total, you'll see the $292,313,676, which is the total of all of our annually adopted funds.
Question for you, Kristin.
Sure.
On the event center, the $83,000 increase, what's that contributed to?
A lot of it is in the carnival receipts with the increase in their wristband going from $20 to $25. Next? Yep, okay.
Boy, I hate to bog us down in the first 11 minutes.
No worries. Questions are good.
I'm still not following. Just go back over what you said about proposed versus...
Sure, yeah. Because it can be confusing.
There was a number you, you said something about 11.5, and I can't find that. Anyway, I'm having a hard time following your numbers.
Sure, no worries. So, the health insurance fund, if you look on page 50, you see the self-insured and dental fund.
Yes.
And if you follow me to the FY '20 proposed column, and you follow it all the way down to that fund, do you see the total of 11.5 million there? It's 11,513.
Yes, yes.
So, what this page is doing is, like Lauren said, it's breaking it down by the revenue types, but this slide's just kind of a high-level overview of what are, what are the total of our annually adopted funds and the change in from, so the slide's presenting from adopted to proposed budget. The budget book has your adopted budget for reference, but the increase or decrease in dollar change and percent change is actually going from revised to proposed in your budget document.
From revised to proposed?
Amended.
The amended, sorry.
From amended to proposed.
Now, that I got. I was looking for the word revised.
Right.
So, the total amount for, that, the one you just mentioned is, we're going to spend $101,824 less this year than we spent last year. Because that number's in parentheses.
Correct. If you're going from amended to the proposed budget for FY '20.
And is that the way we should be looking at that? I thought that's the way you're presenting it.
Yes, for, yes, for the budget book, yes. For the point of this presentation, I like to show where we're at at similar points in time without the fund balance transfer that takes place.
Okay.
Because it can be a little misleading if we're transferring $15 million, and normally I have to take that, like when I start the five-year plan, I take out that 15, or 15% fund balance transfer out of my starting number because I want a true, what is a true operating budget? What are we looking at going into the new fiscal year? So, it's I take out all of the anomalies, the transfers that we're making. So, you can see to me similar points in time. Last year at this time, we were gearing up, and the budget was around for FY '19, the general fund budget of $255 million. So, this year, at the, at a similar point in time, we're proposing the general fund budget at $269 million. So, therefore, the fund balance transfer hasn't taken place at either points in time. Does that make sense?
It does.
So, maybe for next year, we need to have the budget book go from adopted to proposed so the presentation in the book matches. Would that help?
Well, I guess I'm just getting hung up. Again, we're 15 minutes in, so maybe I'll just sit back and let you talk, and then we'll go from there. That might be better.
Sure, and yeah, and we can, you know, follow up offline, too.
That's fine.
Yeah, can you, yeah. So, this page just goes over an overall summary of, I've already kind of touched on a lot of it. So, again, at the time of proposed, when we were compiling the preliminary budget, we did not have the recommended two-cent tax increase. So, that's why I'm showing the 72 cents, because that's what all of those numbers that follow below it are based off of. So, you're seeing that our valuation increased by $936 billion. The penny on the tax rate increased from 2.26 to 2.3. And then our all funds, which is just all of those annually adopted funds that I just went over on the previous slide, that's the total of all those annually adopted funds. So, that totals $292,313,676. With just focusing on the general fund, our main operating fund is $269,805,596, or a 5% increase from the FY '19 adopted budget. And then the FTEs is just showing our full-time equivalents, which I'll get into more specifics of that as we go along throughout the presentation, but the increase in FTEs is, are the 23 new positions request. Next slide. So, now, this slide is just touching on our general fund. So, again, that, those, that made, main operating fund. So, what this slide goes over are what are the individual revenue sources that make up the general fund budget of that $269,805,596. So, if you refer to page 69 in your budget book, if my page numbers are correct. Yes, that's always good. It kind of gives, it's starting in the general fund revenue summary where you can get more information. I'm just going to hit on the highlights, but feel free to stop me as I'm going along if you have any other comments. So, our ad valorem property taxes is our primary source of revenue. And again, this is, these figures right now are estimated at a 72-cent tax rate. So, for FY '19, or for FY '20 proposed, our ad valorem taxes are budgeted at $170.9 million, which is an increase of around 3.78%. The other taxes category is primarily our sales tax, but also includes our cable franchise fee and our white goods. So, this other taxes is, the FY '20 proposed budget totals $52,785,613, which is around an 8.7% increase from last year's adopted budget. The intergovernmental revenue category, those are mainly our revenues for our DHS department, so it primarily consists of our state and federal, federal grants. And this totals for FY '20, our proposed budget is $21,315,255. For permits and fees, that's including our building inspections department and our register of deeds fees. And for FY '20, this category is budgeted at $7,207,427, or an increase of around 3.1, or 3.3%. For sales and services, we are proposing an FY '20 budget of $13,724,418, or an increase of around 5.25%. And the primary revenue in this category are ambulance fees budgeted at $6.1 million. Our investment earnings, we are proposing to increase from $500,000 to another $500,000 to make that budget a million dollars for FY '20, just based on history of where we're coming in with our investment earnings for FY '19. So, that miscellaneous category are those revenues that obviously don't fit nicely into another one of those category areas. So, FY, for FY '20, we are proposing $486,165 in this category, and revenues that fall in that area are sale of fixed assets, and it is an increase, or actually a decrease of around $1,200. And then the other financing sources category is mainly our lottery, it is our lottery proceeds, which we are proposing to increase by $300,000 for FY '20, so bringing that budget to $2.3 million. And that's based on history of lottery proceeds. We felt comfortable adjusting that up this year.
So, the numbers that are up here are supposed to be the same numbers that are in here?
No.
Because they're not.
They're not.
I know they're not, but that's what I'm asking. Like, it's minor. So, for example, like, on the ad valorem taxes, the percent change, you have 3.78. This has 3.93. So, they're off just by a little bit. What am I missing?
So, it's because this one's going from amended to proposed.
Okay.
And this presentation's going from adopted to proposed.
Yes, so from my brain.
I do see that they are the same numbers, but, I mean, it could just be a minor error here.
So, for the...
Yours are the same?
No.
For our benefit, as well as...
No, I'm saying these, compare these to those.
Yeah, but they're looking at the percent increase over year over year.
Adopted to proposed is the exact same as that.
Right. So, for next year, would it be easier if the budget was prepared from adopted to proposed, or if we were consistent with the way the budget book showed the increase or decrease year over year?
The slides, the slides just need to match.
Yeah, that's what would help me if they just matched.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so the reason, again, why your percent change and dollar figures aren't matching is because it is going from amended budget to here to proposed, and the presentation's going from adopted to proposed.
Okay.
But we will work on getting that consistent for the future.
And so, could you go through just a short synopsis of how we arrive at adopted versus amended? What are the things that occur to cause it to be amended?
Sure. So, once the budget is adopted, starting July 1, the new fiscal year starts. Once Susan presents the remaining funds that we need to transfer to the capital reserve fund for the 15% fund balance policy, and anything excess go into the capital reserve fund, that large budget amendment, that fund balance transfer is an example of a budget amendment that takes place, that therefore you have your adopted budget as of July 1, but then the amendments and transfers take place all throughout the year. So, if a, if a department was to get an additional grant that they didn't really, originally a budget for, you're obviously going to increase the revenue and expenditure. So, therefore, your original budget changed from what I presented and what was adopted versus what it is after the grant was received. Others consist of, you know, our departments will make transfers from travel to office supplies, or, so anytime you're deviating from your original budget is the difference in the adopted budget to amended or revised. Does that make sense? Okay. So, the next slide just goes over, do you mind going to the next slide? Just goes over, just the, it's just kind of a visual representation of all the information that I just went over, but I think it's kind of helpful to see it in a bar graph so you can see what are our primary revenue sources and where, obviously, do the majority come from. So, you can obviously see that our ad valorem property taxes comprise around 64% of our budget, and then that other taxes category coming in close to 20%, which, again, that's primarily our sales tax, and then the other revenue sources that I just went over as follows. And then this slide, I just thought was kind of helpful. So, it's showing you what our FY '20 budget is by our primary revenue sources. It's all the information I went over, but it just lists the primary revenue sources and key components that are making up each individual category.
Okay, now we'll talk about our main properties, property taxes, which are our main source of income. So, at the, for the proposed 2020, we anticipate adding $6,426,210 to our proposed budget. So, this is a 3.9 increase over the adopted budget. So, at the time of the budget last year, we're going to project that we're going to increase it by 3.9%. This is just the real personal property and public service income. The previous slides included, I'll think, also things like delinquent taxes and grocery receipts, but we're just going to mainly hone in on that main ad valorem tax collections right here on this spreadsheet. The, the 3.9% levy growth equates to a valuation increase of about $936 billion since 2019's budget was adopted, and this comes from discoveries and over-collection of our budget in 2019. So, right now, we're projected at the end of June 30th, that we will be about $2 million over our FY '19 budget. So, we want to incorporate that and what we think the growth's going to be in '20 to get us to what our proposed budget is going to be. So, with the over-collection of the discoveries in '19 and what we think the growth's going to be in '20, we also are going to say that the budget's going to increase $6.4 million for our property taxes. When we're calculating the, we have the re, the valuation from our tax department, we have to apply the tax collection rate at the end of the previous fiscal year, so that's why we take the valuation, we divide by $100 for, for 100, and then we have to apply our collection rate. So, the collection rate for the real property was 98.81%, and then our DMV is 100%, if you keep in mind that, you know, tax and tag, you go to the tag office now, and so we, we, when they bill it, we collect it, so we get 100% of that. So, we had to use a combined rate of 98.92%. So, that's by law, we cannot budget any more than that. So, that's why I always want to point that out to you. So, with all that, the information from our tax department, the valuation is projected to be $23,811,500,000 for the FY '20 budget. Questions?
That's after revale, projected revale?
FY '20 is not the revale. Your '21 will be a revale.
Okay. That's when it becomes effective.
Effective, yes. The valuation is based on, they call them tax bills of 2020, but it affects our fiscal year '21, so. And then our second largest income is our sales tax. And so, for the first nine months, and keep in mind that we always get two years, two months to relay, so for the first nine months, which sales taxes increased 9.8% over FY ' '18, which is good. Sales tax arrives around the 15th of each month, and like I said, it represents two months in arrears. Right now, the, of the, we've collected nine months' worth, which is, amounts to $37 million, and our revenue budget for that item is 46.2. So, that's about eight, we've collected right now about 80.7% of our budget. So, we're, right now, we're projecting to be $3 million over our budget for FY '19, which is in a much better spot than we were last year this time. I remember last time, we, last year, we had quite a few large refunds. So, at, we ended FY '18, we had a under-budget amount of $1 million. It was $1,680,000. So, each year, it's hard to project the sales tax, but we do what we do our best. So, with that being said, the, the things that throw off our estimates are the large reductions based on the refunds that we have to pay out to our nonprofits and our, and our hospitals and things like that. That comes out of our pot of money that is, that's collected by the state and distributed back to us. So, some months, we could get a, you know, let's just say, we could get $100,000 taken away from us for refunds, and the next month, it might be $800,000. And it's up and down each month, and we've tried, year after year, to try and think, you know, is that going to happen in March each year? Is it going to happen in October of each year? But there's no rhyme or reason, the state decides to pay back the refunds when, I guess maybe they're, I'm guessing their cash flow, they had, is their mercy. Some of the larger popular, hospitals and stuff, they will remit their sales tax refund claims twice a year. We, as a county, we do ours once a year. So, getting a handle on when there's going to be coming in sometimes is a challenge. I did put down a little bit of history. So, for the refunds through March of FY '19, we've had about $5.4 million hit the county for refunds. And then the previous years in March were like 6.6 million, 4.7 million, and then back in FY '16 was 5.6 million. This is like, we have a historical average, like, I think it took like eight years, and it's like 10.6% we'd have an average. So, right now, we're at 8.5% this year. So, I do have to take that into consideration that during the last three months of the year, we might get hit with some of those 10.6 refund months. So, I do take that, trying to be conservative when I'm trying to do my estimates for, for sales tax. Some of the refunds have been, one year, we had the highest, it was 16.8% of our money was paid out in refunds, so hoping that won't happen again. So, we do anticipate some larger reductions during the 12 months coming up for hospital construction, because if you drive by hospitals, always construction going on, so we do keep that in mind. I've estimated that the total revenue, like I said, will come in about $3 million over budget based on the first nine months of the year. So, the trends that we are experiencing, or, excuse me, the trends that we're expecting for the next year will be about 2% increase. So, we did increase our sales tax revenue budget next year by 2%, and that equates to $4,478,539. So, that money will be added to our budget for FY '20. The state recommends about a 3% to 5% growth each year, and we, you know, if we would've done that last year, when I was under budget by a million, we would've been even further out, because we had done like a 1.5% in FY '18, and it just didn't happen. So, we try and be conservative and watch the trends for that. I did want to point out at this time that, you know, there's been some discussion with the redistribution of the sales tax in Senate Bill 650 for our future sales tax distributions, and we've done some calculations and tried to interpret some of the bills. So, for right now, this sales tax Senate bill has not done a lot. So for right now, this sales tax Senate bill has not done a lot of movement, but we project maybe around that we will lose about $873,000 by the time it's fully implemented each year. When we spoke with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners employees, they said it might be similar to what they projected back in FY15, when they talked about the redistribution at that time. So I went back and pulled those records out. At that time, they were projecting that Cabarrus County will lose about $2.4 million a year, so by the time it was fully implemented. So somewhere, until they give us more direction on that, we'll just keep watching it and going through the scenarios as they're sent out. So I just wanted to point that out, that we're on top of it, and we're watching for new things to come out and give us more information, but we will be on the lookout for that. Are there questions about the sales tax?
All right, so now we'll shift gears if there's no further questions about revenues, and we'll jump to expenditures. So we kind of display our expenditures in multiple different ways. What this slide's going over is our expenditures by our categories. So our three major categories here are personnel services, which are going to include salary and benefits for our employees, retirement rate increases, merits, COLA. So for FY20 proposed, our personnel budget totals $84,449,642. So operating category is just day-to-day operations within all of our departments. So for FY20 proposed, this budget totals $183,208,742. And for our capital outlay, so this is for any capital items that are under the CIP threshold, so there are really any projects over 5,000, so a lot of times typically, equipment, furniture, motor vehicles. So for FY20 proposed, this category totals $2,147,212. And if you go to the next slide, you can just see kind of the breakdown between our operations and our personnel cost and then that capital outlay to see how it comprises the total budget. So you can see that 68% of our total general fund budget is comprised in operational cost with 31% for personnel cost, and then that tiny slither of capital outlay coming in at 1%. But I think what you're kind of more familiar with seeing is the next slide, which is showing you an overview of the proposed FY20 general fund budget by what we call our function areas, so our primary department areas and how we kind of group them. So again, the total general fund budget for FY20 is $269,805,596. And you can see that 47% of our general fund budget goes towards educational funding. So that's including current expense, regular instruction, cost, debt service, technology, building and grounds. So for FY20, and the next slide, you can leave it on this slide for the presentation, but for y'all's purposes, the next slide might be a little more kind of helpful to follow. It's going to have the totals that I'm about to read, and you can see the percentage breakdown. So for our next major expenditure category is public safety, which is 17.5% of total general fund spending. And the departments that this includes are Sheriff's Department, which has a budget of around $17 million, our jail budget of around $11 million, animal control of around $886,000, our animal shelter budget of around $515,000, construction standards at $2.6 million. Bless you.
Sorry.
Our emergency management budget of around $327,000, fire services at $1.4 million, and then our EMS department at $9.9 million. So then our third largest function area is obviously our human services department, so that's comprising around 15% of total general fund spending for FY20. And the breakdown, you can see the departments listed on the next slide in your agenda, which is showing your primary departments there. So they are transportation with a budget of $2.4 million, child welfare at $8.9 million, child support at $1.9 million, economic services is included in our human services category, and the proposed budget for FY20 is around $8.6 million. Our economic support services division, that was the new division that was established last year, has a budget of around $2.9 million. Our adult senior services and nutrition services has a budget of around $3 million. And then our veteran services and cooperative extension are also considered in this human services category. So our veterans department has a budget of approximately $290,000, and cooperative extension has a budget of approximately $408,000. So this slide's just going over the breakdown and what are our primary departments within those expenditure function categories. And then, of course, there's more detail in the budget book of the information that I'm reading of the primary departments and their FY20 proposed budgets.
Kristin, what page in the book is that slide there?
It should be on page 77.
It's a chart.
Page 77 of your budget book?
It's a chart.
Yeah, well, if you just, if you go down to the total, you'll see the same.
She's just saying that she's done it like that, but this is the page showing the totals?
So the page 77 in your budget book shows the individual department totals.
We've just got the numbers here, but it says it's 77.
So that tells you each department or sub-department that is within that function area. So if you wanted to just go down the line, so she already said, like, public safety is at the bottom of page 77, you'll see where it says sheriff, admin, jail, animal control, animal shelter, courts maintenance, construction, that will show you each number for those.
Do you see the total, that it's matching the totals that are presented on the slide?
The next two pages have that breakdown as well.
Yeah, it's just not getting, I guess, as granular with going into each departmental's So our general, oh, sorry, go ahead.
And the proposed change column is over, that's beyond, that ties back to the amended budget?
Yes.
In this book?
Correct.
Okay.
So our general government category is our next largest category, and it comprises around 11.4% of all general fund spending. So you can see the individual departments on page 77 that make up the general government function area. And it's also listed on the slide, very high level, just what are the departments that comprise this area. So our general government function area for FY20 totals around $30,771,731. So the departments in this category are our Board of Commissioners, human resources, our tax department, Board of Elections, our finance department, our information, technology and services department, infrastructure and asset management, which covers grounds maintenance, administration, our sign shop, building maintenance, facility services, and our fleet department. Other departments in this category are Register of Deeds Department, County Manager's Office, and our communications and outreach. So the next largest expenditure area in the general fund is our other debt service, also known as our non-school debt service category. So the budget for that area is $9,235,680. And so projects that are covered under this type of debt service are sheriff admin building, the Walls Park land, our 911 equipment lease. So it's, again, it's non-education debt service in this category, because the education debt service is included in the education category of the $127 million.
47.43%, that does include school debt?
Sorry, say that again?
On the education, on the general fund here, expenditures, 47.43%. The debt service is included in that?
Yes, yes, sir.
Do you have a breakdown somewhere between the debt service and operational cost for education?
We do, yeah, you can actually find that in the education section of your budget book. So if you go, just for future reference, to the education tab, you can find it on...
433. And the table is on 434.
Actually, that 435 page might be helpful for you, too. It kind of is showing the breakdown with current expense funding, the proposed charter school funding, capital outlay that we give to our school systems, and then it separates out the debt service there, so you can break out the debt service from the continued operational Any other questions on education debt? And I know we'll touch on some of that later on in the slide presentation as well. So our next largest spending area is our culture and recreation department.
Hang on, one.
Oh, sure.
Let's figure out where we're at. We're still at 78?
We're on page 79, culture and recreation.
Culture, okay, got it.
So this function area has a budget of $6,134,931 for FY20. So the departments that make up this area are our active living and parks department, so that includes our parks and our senior centers, and also our libraries. And then the other culture and rec, if you're looking on page 79, the $26,000, I know Lauren will touch on later in the presentation, but that's the contribution we give to the arts So our economic and physical development category comprises around 2.14% of total general fund spending. So if you're following along in your budget books, too, this is on now page 78, and at the very top, you can see the departments and their proposed budgets that comprise that function area of $5,776,676. So just the main departments in this category are planning and zoning, soil and water, economic development incentives, and community development. Our contribution to the other funds category is just the contribution for FY20 that the general fund is making to the arena fund. So you can see that contribution, if you're following along in your budget books, on page 77, it's at the very top, and it shows you the contribution that we are proposing the general fund will make to the arena fund for FY20 in the amount of $745,613. And this is a good example, if you kind of look on that page 77, of why we don't go from the revised budget to the adopted budget for this presentation, because do you see that large $13 million showing up in the amended budget? That's the transfer that we're making most likely to the capital reserve fund for capital projects. So that's why it can be a little confusing with how we show this information to kind of give you the best kind of picture in time of what the budget's looking like from last year at this time to this year at this time. And then our last function area for our general fund budget is our environmental protection area, which is comprising our waste reduction and recycling departments, and this budget Are there any questions about our major function areas?
Probably shouldn't have this figured out, but on page 69, on the operations, where there's an $8.9 million difference in the proposed change, what is that attributed to?
Sorry, where are you looking?
Page 70, excuse me, 69, under the expenditures, the operations, 8.9, what is that attributed to?
So that number's going from amended to your proposed budget, and that could be anything from additional grants that we got throughout the year. Sorry. Yeah, right there.
You seem like a large...
Off the top of my head, I don't know, I can look into that and get back to you. It's primarily just revisions that we're making all throughout the budget year. So if we look back next year at this time, at our FY20 amended budget, you're going to see probably a substantial increase in the budget, just based on how revenues are coming in, additional grant funding allocated, you know, transfers between departments, departmental spending, but off the top of my head, I can look into it for you.
But it's a significant amount of something that you think's not going to happen again, because we've reduced what we're trying to spend for this year. I mean, that's the way I'm reading that. I had kind of the same question when we were going through it the first time. As I understood your explanation of adopted versus amended, and now, I mean, you're truing up, you're going back to what we originally thought we were going to spend, and budgeting this year based on that, and taking out whatever the anomaly is.
Right, right, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, we just don't, it could have been anything.
Right, I mean, just slight transfers and, you know, over our 25 departments, so it's not, it might not be just one particular item in particular, but I can pull a report and try to look into that further.
Yeah, we can get the detail for you.
Yeah, no, that'd be great. And just as a side note, since we carved out time for general discussion, we don't need to do it now, but under, when we talk about library, sometimes I'm still a little confused on how we do libraries, because it seems like the municipalities areas pay for park, we pay for park, I'm not sure how, I'm still unclear on how that works.
Operational, we pay for. Yeah, if it's a new structure, or like the Midland branch, Midland is leasing that space, and they up it, then we went in and put the racks and the furniture and everything in there, and then we pay all the operational costs. We do not pay for the building itself. Now, we do own Concord Library, and we own Conaples Library, and we own Harrisburg, they own the building, and we operate, we own the inside, and we operate the building, so...
Well, like I said, we can just, I mean, I may want to ask a little bit about that, too, but we don't need to bog down now, we can put that under the question or general discussion idea.
So were you asking a question about on page 69, use of the $6,390 on personal services? Was that the line you were talking about?
No, the operations right below that. It's probably the reappropriations, too, that we make throughout the year, that I'll come and present in August and September, so those are now showing up in your revised budget, because you've already adopted your budget in July. Any projects that we roll forward from year to year, contracts, purchase orders, that's going to now reflect in your revised budget figure. So therefore, it's increasing your revised budget figure during the year, but we haven't done that portion at the point that we're presenting right now. So the majority of that's probably that.
It's usually about $2 million, the reappropriations we bring in July, September, August and September. And then there are a lot of departments that may have a purchase, like IT might need a server this year, but then they don't need, excuse me, they don't need a server next year, so it won't be there. So that's kind of a lot of the 9511 projects that come this year and they're not here the next year, but it's a combination of a lot of those things, but the reappropriations are a big portion of that also.
So next up, if there's, are there any further questions on our main expenditure areas? All right, so we'll dive into the new position detail that is proposed for the FY20 budget. So I'd just kind of like to note that when we started the process, there were a total of 51 positions requested across all of our countywide departments, and we've had multiple meetings with management, HR, the individual departments, to really assess and determine kind of critical needs and priorities for these departments. So after these meetings, we are recommending or proposing twenty-three new positions with the FY twenty budget, which I know you heard the county manager touch on last night in his budget message, but I'll just go over them again, and if you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And this is also in your budget book on pages
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine through ninety, kind of talk, get more specific with the new positions. It's under the position summary tab. Is everyone following me so far? Yep, okay. So our county manager's office is requesting a business analyst position, which will assist with our Acela program, so that is our online permitting software that we use in conjunction with a few of our municipalities for central permitting efforts. Our infrastructure and asset management department has requested a maintenance planner. So this will be to transition, or to assist with renovations of current spaces and new services, as well as the transition from those new construction to more preventative and planned maintenance efforts, which the end goal's hopefully to help us extend the life of our assets. Our sheriff's department is requesting two deputy positions and a sergeant position. So part of these were part of the governmental security services division that we already have in place. So once these new positions will come on in FY twenty, they will return back to the sheriff's department for patrol-type services. I, I will note that these three positions have no additional budget impact for FY twenty, because we did not budget three detention officers' salary and benefits. So the full position, we kept the FTE, so we kept the position, we just didn't budget salary and benefits for three positions in our jail, just due to extended vacancies in that department. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. So our sheriff's department also requested an additional sergeant, which I am showing on the PowerPoint presentation, to assist in their youth development division. So that's to assist with their SROs, the school resource officers. So currently, there are seventeen school resource officers assigned to over nineteen schools, and this division only has one sergeant and one lieutenant to cover. So when one of those school resource officers is out, one of those lieutenant or sergeants are having to cover, so this is just to give them additional coverage within that department. Our animal shelter is requesting a part-time kennel tech for FY twenty, mainly to assist with medical testing, but also to assist them with weekend coverage, so you have adequate coverage there, because I know that that's probably some of the busiest time for the animal shelters during the weekends. And then, as you are familiar, our fire services department is requesting to go from their twelve hours to a twenty-four hour shift change with this FY twenty budget. So in order to do so, that would result in additional fire captain and five firefighters. All right, so our active living and parks and senior center is requesting two part-time park rangers, and this is mainly just to assist with facility use and setup for events. And then they're also requesting a program assistant at this, that will be housed at the senior center for event coverage and coordination efforts. And then, last but not least, our department of human services is requesting an additional seven positions. So primarily, this is due to an increase in caseload and volume, but part of it also ties into the hub. So those positions they're requesting are an additional receptionist position, which will be housed in their administration budget, and that's mainly for customer service for their front lobby area. So they wanted that to kind of be the face of the organization, that when you come in and a client needs kind of directions into what program or service they may need, that's what this position will help with. Right now, they're currently using a temp agency to fill that need, so this would put a full-time position for that agency, just to kind of create that consistency. Next up is also a receptionist that will be housed in administration's budget, but it's a shared position, so shared cost with the Cabarrus Health Alliance, and that's to help with the implementation of the hub. So we will get fifty percent funding for that position from the Health Alliance. So what's included in the budget is just going to be the county's portion of that position. And then we actually get, not to confuse anything any further, but we also get fifty percent reimbursement back on that fifty percent that we're paying, just because it's a DHS position. All right, so that family support specialist is for our economic support services area, and they're requesting one position there, and that's just due to a workload increase. They noted that that division saw an increase of workload over twenty percent over the past three years. The income maintenance caseworker, too, for economic support services, is tied to grant funds, which we do have the grant budgeted for. It's for the Smart Start Grant, which is a program to increase the early care and education across the state, which it's high-quality early care that focuses on family-friendly services, child-focused, and it's fair to the providers. So that additional position is solely tied to grant funding for that program. The income maintenance training supervisor is, and all of these positions I did forget to note, are reimbursed, and the majority are reimbursed up to fifty percent, except those last two IMC twos, the income maintenance caseworker twos. They're dealing with Medicaid and family and children and Medicaid eligibility, so they are up to seventy-five percent reimbursable.
And you're saying reimbursable from Medicaid? Is that where, where does the funds that we're getting back, where does that come from?
Yeah, Medicaid, state, and the state. So the income maintaining, sorry to go back, but the income maintenance training supervisor really is to help with the employee-to-supervisor ratio in this department, and this position would oversee nine program managers that are dealing with Medicaid lead workers and the potential Medicaid transformation that'll take place. And then those two, the two income maintenance caseworkers are dealing with eligibility requirements, and the future goal is to move those two IMC twos to the hub, once that is fully implemented.
And everybody's familiar with the hub, right? And we're going to establish a, a location over at the First Assembly, so we will have social workers there as well, along with the, with the property Christian Ministry, First Assembly's food pantries, the Health Alliance's dentist, ministry area, and WIC, WIC is moving in there as well. So the hub is bringing all of these governmental and nonprofit agencies into one, sort of creating that one-stop shop.
So last for the personnel, we just normally note any personnel changes, so this could be any reclassifications that we're proposing, any transfers and moving from one budget to another, and then also a change in any hours that we have to show, because therefore it is impacting the overall full-time equivalent change. So this is, you can actually find this on page ninety-one of the budget book, the presentation says ninety-two, but it's actually page ninety-one. So the sheriff's department is proposing to transfer sixteen positions from the jail division to the sheriff's department admin budget, and this is part of the governmental security services division. So it's just moving, there's courthouse security positions, they're still going to be at the courthouse, they're just moving budgets, just to stay with the others that are, the other governmental security, the two deputies and sergeant that we have patrolling our other government-owned facilities. There is a reclassification within our board of elections department to reclassify an election coordinator to an election analyst position, and that's just to reflect the data and research component that that position is currently doing. But again, no change in FTE, it's just to reclass the, the job title. And then our library is requesting to increase the hours for six part-time library assistants at our Concord Library from sixteen hours to twenty hours, which is a point-ten percent FTE change for six positions, which is why you're seeing that point-six-zero-zero-zero-zero there. And that is just to have, provide additional hours for their summer reading program, and just to really help them recruit and aid in retention efforts by getting more hours to offer to these library assistants. Any questions with any of the personnel changes?
So you can see on page, on page ninety, there were actually fifty-one position requests, and through, through our process, we, there was only twenty-one, or twenty-three recommended. All of them were good requests and legitimate requests, however, we just need to make the, make the numbers work. Most of the ones that you see in human services are caseloads, they're increasing every, seems like every month, they're increasing because of the needs that are out there, so that is why they got most of the positions.
Also, I think it's important to know, we meet with departments and we're discussing their budget and going through these, we're also asking them to tell us what their priorities are. If they're making, in any case, like human services, where they might have multiple position requests, we ask them to rank those by priority, so we're not just deciding from above what they're getting and not getting, it is matching the priorities and the things that they find the most important.
Yeah, that's a good point. Next. All right. So the county personnel ordinance states that the cost of living allowance will be made at the beginning of each fiscal year, based on the Consumer Price Index, or CPI, increase for the previous calendar year, with the adjustment rounded down to the nearest half percent. This year's COLA is one-point-five percent, with the total cost at one million five-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-two. County employees also have the opportunity to earn a merit increase, which is based off of the employee's performance evaluation. Employees are considered for merit on their anniversary date of hire. This year, the merit is up to two-point-five percent. This is shown in the budget as five-hundred-thousand dollars budgeted, and the remaining funded with lapsed salary. Any questions about merit?
And as we've discussed before, that's, that could be from zero to two-point-five percent, based on their score.
Yeah, we base it on a two percent average, and if you remember last year, with the budget being tight, we actually didn't set aside any funding for merit, and we just proposed to fund it totally with lapsed salary. So this year, we are proposing to have the five-hundred-thousand dollars dedicated towards funding for merits, with the additional coming from lapsed salary. So this slide just goes over our health insurance and workers' compensation information. You've already heard a lot of this throughout the budget process, but I'll just hit the highlights. So the board, you already approved the health insurance increase in cost for FY twenty, so this is going to seven thousand nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars per employee for the year for health insurance, which is an increase of around a hundred and twenty dollars from last year's rate, or around a two percent increase. For workers' compensation, we are projecting for premiums to be around one million two-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars. And I will note that the rates remained the same for our workers' compensation, we base it off the state's rate. Theirs can typically be higher than we need, so we base it off a percentage, which there, this year, we use forty-three percent of the state's rates to comprise our workers' compensation accounts. And I work with our finance department, our assistant finance director, and human resources to evaluate health insurance and workers' compensation each year, and they're evaluated on an annual basis, just to make sure that there's adequate coverage for our employees in those departments.
Okay. Debt service. So for this FY twenty year, they, we have a, at June thirtieth, excuse me, at June thirtieth nineteen, I want to let you know that we have an outstanding debt of three-hundred-and-seventy-seven million dollars, that's our outstanding principal amount. That's also in detail in the debt section in your budget book. That is also with the corresponding need of interest of ninety-four million dollars. So at June thirtieth, that's what we would owe, if we paid everything out that day. So with that being said, we have normal retirement of debt service each year and issuance of new debt. So the, for FY twenty, the net decrease in debt service is going to be one million six-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-four dollars. With that, we just wanted to give you an idea, we are retiring some of our old debt. For instance, we are dropping off our COPS two thousand eight B, and that, and also two other ones, the COPS two thousand eight A and COPS two thousand nine. Some of those debt issuances are, were refinanced, and at the point in time when you refinance something, sometimes you have to leave behind some of the different series in the debt that doesn't qualify for refinancing, there's no need to refinance them. So these are some of the things that are dropping off this year. So just to give you an idea for the amounts, and for the amount, for the COPS two thousand eight A, we're going to be dropping off about two-point-three million dollars with debt service that we've been paying all along, so that drops off. And that particular issuance was for, if you remember back, from way back in two thousand eight, we built Cox Mill High School with that money. We had engineering architects for AT, AT Allen and Hickory Ridge Middle School, Patriots Elementary, and we had a wing addition, AL Brown. So that's just some of the things that we're, we use for that debt issuance. We're also dropping off two thousand eight B, and that one was for the refunding of J. N. Robinson High School. That one was, we borrowed money for that in nineteen ninety-nine, and then we refinanced it, and it's finally dropping off. So you think about these schools, when we build them, they're, and we, we paid debt on for twenty years. You think about what time flies and how many schools we built in between that time, so it does layer in and out. And then the last one that's dropping off is our COPS two thousand nine. In that particular one, we were able to buy, to purchase and build Patriot Elementary, the building for AT Allen Elementary, Hickory Ridge Middle School, Winkler Middle School, and the AL Brown, the renovations at AL Brown, and then the rest of, the rest of the addition with that money. So all that's dropping off, and then we're adding in new debt this year for our land, for the middle school, high school, and senior center that we had our public hearing for last night. And then the other, you know, decreases, increases would be for normal fluctuations in interest, and the, if we, our full, we have our full implementation in FY nineteen of our COPS, our LOBS two thousand eighteen, which is for our new Hickory Ridge Elementary School, our ATC for the, Rowan Cabarrus Community College, our HVA systems, and some land. So all that's coming on and off, so it nets, it nets to a one-point-six million dollar decrease for next year. But keep in mind that we're in the, in the meantime, just on the horizon, we have this, this land debt that's coming on, but it's just seven years, but then we also have in our future debt horizon, the courthouse and a new middle school, so that will be coming on as we layer that in in the next couple of years, and we'll have to make sure we have enough money budgeted for debt service. Also wanted to point out, the debt service is about twenty-one percent of our budget each year, so it's quite expensive. Questions about debt?
Susan, once again, what was the gross debt, the gross debt about?
The gross for this, oh, that we have right now?
The school, yeah.
I do have that.
I, I put down three-seventy-seven, but-
That's three-hundred-and-seventy-seven million five-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. That should be the very first page in your debt section in your big budget book, so.
Thanks.
And what did you say that total percent was?
For the debt service for the schools and the county, it's about, about twenty-one percent.
And that's page four thirty-nine on your budget book.
The percentage, if you want to further break down, and this is based on FY nineteen's budget, that I have the percentages, but the school debt at that point is seventeen-point-eight-one percent, and then the other debt, which is the county, other county facilities, is three-point-seven-six, that's why I come up with a twenty-one percent. And that information is also published on our, your tax bills when they come out. We have that percentage, it tells you where, where does your money go, and it has those percentages on there. We provide that once a year for the tax bills.
Okay, so we got the three-seventy-seven, whatever, and now, and we'll be adding the middle school and the courthouse to that.
Yes.
Okay.
For FY twenty, we'll be adding the outstanding debt for the three land purchases, and that gross amount right now, and of course, we don't have the pieces of property under contract, is about eight-point-five. However, last night, if you remember, that we had our public hearing, we set up to million dol, eleven million dollars. Because that's to come, so we don't have to start the whole process over, the money, if the bids come in more than what we anticipate, so.
Yeah, well, when you consider all of the things that the county has done in the last number of- number of years, you know, I don't remember what the debt service was, you know, in 2014, five years ago, but we're running pretty close to where we were then, debt service. But now, but then again, we're facing the courthouse, which is going to be huge, and another middle school, and potentially another high school, but, well, I shouldn't say potentially. I think the way we're growing is pretty inevitable, I think. But overall, though, I think that we're fairly well holding the line on the debt, which I think is, you know, is to be commended. You know, good management and trying to manage the growth, and so I think that you guys are doing a great job on that.
Interesting, you said that since five years, so that would have been 2014. In 2015, we refinanced. It was a good year to refinance, we had some savings on our interest during those years. And then in 16, when we rebuilt Mount Pleasant Middle School, replacement Royal Oaks and Kannapolis Middle, that's when we borrowed the money for that, it's 2016. And then in 17, when we borrowed money for the high school and the PLC. And then 18, like I said, we borrowed for the elementary school and the Advanced Technology Center, and some smaller projects, too. So we've been either refinancing or issuing debt almost every year.
And in addition to all that, I, one of the Odell, we paid cash for that.
Yes.
So that's another one of the schools. So when you consider all of those things, and to maintain the debt, that's a real serious accomplishment. I mean, it really is.
And you should be proud, too, that we always try and pay cash for our engineering architect and land purchase upfront, and the equipping on the backside. And we try and just borrow money for the construction and land development. This time, we are having to dip into and borrow money for some land, but usually in the past, we've been able to use cash to...
All right, so next up, we'll just go over a summary of our education funding. So this is just for our public school system, so for Kannapolis City Schools and Cabarrus County Schools. And you can find further detail and information in the budget book on pages 429 through 437. And it follows a similar breakdown in categories that I'm about to go over. So for current expense funding for FY20, it has a proposed budget of $74,408,006. So when we say current expense, this is covering our regular instruction cost, our building and grounds maintenance and technology cost, local positions, utilities, teacher supplements, non-certified positions as well. Our capital outlay remained unchanged from FY19 adopted budget to our FY20 proposed budget. For FY20, this is proposed at $1,120,000. And that is, the breakdown for that is with Kannapolis City Schools getting $100,000 of capital outlay funding, and Cabarrus County Schools getting $1,020,000. Our debt service, as you're seeing, is actually projected to decrease from your FY19 budget to your FY20, based on a lot of those debt issuances that rolled off that Susan just touched on. So for FY20 debt service for education, it totals $42,229,320. The county technology and server backup are just data centers to support the data backup and recovery and storage efforts. And the FY20 proposed budget is $45,156. School nurses, you're seeing an increase there, and that is due to an additional part-time Kannapolis middle school nurse that the Health Alliance is requesting, and also a full-time nurse for the alternative school, which they're considering the Performance Learning Center and the Early College. So school nurse totals $2,971,719. And then the charter school, FY20 proposed budget for FY20 is $4,910,317. And that increase is just due to an increase in charter school students proposed for FY20. So if you go to the next slide, we will touch on our Rowan Cabarrus Community College. So their current expense funding did increase around 16% this year, and that's primarily due to a full year's cost of operations at the Advanced Technology Center. So that equates to around $452,000, with the remaining $20,000 due to energy and commodity inflation costs. So the 452 plus the $20,000 is what you're seeing, is as the dollar changed for that $472,000 for current expense funding for Rowan Cabarrus Community College. We are also showing, you're seeing an increase of $100,000 in their capital outlay funding, and that is because we actually did reduce their funding for capital outlay last year at this time, and we're proposing to get them back to their standard $100,000 that we typically give them for capital outlay projects. And then the debt for FY20 is proposed at $1,949,995, and that's actually a decrease over your FY19 adopted budget, just based on some of those debt issuances rolling off.
So I'm going to talk to y'all about outside agencies. So outside agencies help the county carry out its mission by filling a niche that the county can't provide due to scope, funding, or expertise. You can find more information about these agencies listed throughout pages 294, 339, and 368. So as you can see, there's no change in proposed funding amount for the following. Arts Council, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, also known as JCPC. That includes funding for Boys and Girls Club, Teen Court, Positive Parenting Program, and Rowan County Youth Services Bureau. This is a pass-through the county, so we just pass it on to those agencies through an RFP process. The medical examiner is responsible for investigating deaths within the county, and that is mandated. Funding for the EDC Economic Development Corporation remains the same at $400,000. You're going to see a decrease in the following. The North Carolina Forest Service, so the Cabarrus County Ranger. Historically, the state paid 60% of the cost in this program, and the county paid the remaining 40%. The current state legislator, legislature has proposed a tiered system of participation for counties based on their size. And funding goes towards forest fire control, forest management, information and education, and forest pest control. Currently, $72,913 is the county share, and $8,950 is specifically for forest fire equipment operator position. And Carolina Farm Stewardship, the FY2020 proposed budget excludes the allocation for it. And Kristen will talk to you a little bit more about that in deferred tax in a few minutes. You'll also see an increase in the obligation to the city of Kannapolis, which is an inter-local agreement to the city that goes towards paying debt service on public improvement projects. It is budgeted at $1.5 million, a slight increase from last year. We're continuing with outside agencies, and this list can be found on pages 415 and 437 of the budget book. The following agency funding requests remain the same on this page. Veterinarian services for the Spay It Forward program, $586,716 for mental health, for assistance with individuals with mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse needs. This fiscal year includes moving the mental health case manager cost in this program to add another 1.5 FTE case manager to assist with the stepping up program. Currently, we have one case manager that handles assessment and treatment when inmates come into the system, and the new case manager position will handle follow-up and treatment when they leave the system to prevent recidivism. The Concord Downtown Development Corporation, or CDDC, is requesting funding of $25,000 to assist with economic development and marketing initiatives, the same as FY19's adopted budget amount. It continues to fund the marketing coordinator position as a full-time position. Cabarrus County Boys and Girls Club is requesting $50,000 to assist with capital needs. This is an agreement for five years to support their capital campaign project. This total gift of $250,000 will help with their after-school campaign project, oh, sorry, after-school and summer educational enrichment programming by constructing a 36,000-square-foot addition to their current facility on Spring Street. And the Cannon Memorial YMCA requested $250,000 that will be used for capital projects, including a possible new pool in Harrisburg or upgrades to the existing pools in Concord and Kannapolis. There were increases in the Cabarrus Health Alliance proposed budget. It includes $4.5 million in recurring expense, $10,762 in West Nile virus expense, and $2.97 million in school nurse expense. That funding, which was added in FY14, supported nine additional days and an extra hour for 42 part-time school nurses. The FY20 expansion request includes a nurse position for alternative schools, including Early College and Performance Learning Center, and that is $51,908. It also includes a part-time school nurse for Kannapolis Middle School at $29,792, $200,000 for clinic operations, and this also includes merit and fringe increases. Last, we have Special Olympics. In accordance with the agreement with Cabarrus County Schools, this item provides funding for one full-time equivalent position to carry out duties related to the Special Olympics program within the county. The allocation for FY20 reflects an increase to match the state's salary and benefit increase. And you will hear from a majority of these agencies later, either today or in the next workshop on Thursday. Heading into CIP now. All right, just a reminder, capital improvement projects are big county projects worth $100,000 or more. We consider CCS, Cabarrus County Schools projects, at $500,000 or more, and Kannapolis City Schools, and Rowan Cabarrus Community College at $100,000 more as well. We start the process in October every budget year. Our departments and the management team meet to prioritize and assess project necessity. We want to emphasize, this year was a tough selection process and only includes the most critical projects. You can see the list of proposed CIP projects and their applicable project sheets in the budget book on pages 103 through 198. The county is proposing funding for the following. So for Cabarrus County Schools, two activity buses, security cameras throughout the schools, electrical service at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. For Rowan Cabarrus Community College, the Career Business and Technology Center, I believe that was HVAC replacement, fire alarm replacement in South Campus Building 2000. And you'll hear more from the schools later during the workshops about that as well. As far as county projects go, we are requesting Enterprise Physical Security, which is a fancy name for cameras, card readers, and other physical security devices to protect the citizen staff and property at county facilities. The operation center renovations, and governmental center roof and skylight replacement, that's the most expensive project this year. Arena Kitchen Goods Storage Building replacement, this particular project has been deferred for a while, and it's pretty necessary right now. And within the public safety category, you have the training and firing range renovation, and that's the second most expensive. And that is located at 484 Cabarrus Avenue in Concord. And EMS headquarters planning and design is the last CIP project. Do y'all have any questions about those?
Okay. Moving on to deferred tax. Deferred tax collections are segregated and recorded in our capital projects, small projects fund. Reminder, this is property that's been placed in the farm use and preservation program, and when the property no longer qualifies, the county collects the deferred tax going back three years plus interest. The annual collection is just to give you an idea before we start talking about the projects. The annual collections of taxes and interest have ranged from anywhere from $81,000 to $821,000, and we've been doing, segregating the money since 2010. Some of the uses have been over the past nine years, Elmo Lomax Farm, the Harvest Facility, and Land Conservation purchases. Currently, we have in FY19, we have a balance of $2.8 million set aside in this fund. Some of the proposed projects for next year include the things on the screens, the Carolina Farm Stewardship, Lomax Farm. Instead of putting that as a part of our annual adopting budget, we're going to maybe move that over to the deferred taxes. So this is the 40,000 we annually give them, plus an additional 40,000 that's being requested. The Camp Spencer Vending Machine Building and Overlook, $225,000, much needed there. And then the Franklin's Waterline Replacements, $360,000. And last, the Eastern Cabarrus Parkland, a million dollars. So a total of these projects would be $1,665,000 for the deferred tax projects. Questions? Okay, moving on to capital reserve. There's much talk earlier about the proposed money that's moved. At the end of our CAFR presentation, we always were able to transfer anything over 15%. In this past year, if you remember, in January, when we did the CAFR presentation, we transferred $12,303,742. So that's part of the beginning balance, so the $14,982,840. So any, that beginning balance, we've also, in the past two months, we've transferred funds for the early funding of the courthouse engineering architect of $6.4 million. And then we went ahead and purchased, gave permission to purchase the CCS mobile units of $2.4 million. And then we have two project lists that we'll be going over, and the Cabarrus County project list is the $4.7 million, and the school project list is $1.4. Those were the projects we just spoke about, just in categories now. So that, we do all those projects, that'll take us down to a zero capital reserve balance until we have the CAFR presentation again, and then we can refund it. We can fund it more then, and we get interest through the, you know, keeping our money in the fund, stuff's on the way, too. So that's the capital reserve.
One more.
One more?
Yeah. So this slide just goes over the unallocated contingency that we have set aside in the general fund as of now. So right now, there is unallocated contingency, an amount of $1,186,430. So the breakdown, you can see below there, $643,230 is for board contingency, and then the $543,200 is due to the charter school contingency, based on when we get the second month count in November, and we have to, we may have to fund additional charter school students, so we set money aside for those purposes. So I believe now, just due to time constraints, we'll actually take a break. We, Susan, Lauren, and I can pick back up probably at the end of the session. That'll lead way into the proposed tax increase, going over the five-year plan and proposed one-time capital projects and deferred maintenance projects that we have proposed to use with the additional tax revenues. So are there any questions before we switch?
We're going to vary a bit from the schedule as well. We're going to move Kannapolis City Schools in, because Dr. Buckwell is about to get to the airport fairly soon to head out of town. the airport fairly soon to head out of town. So if you want to take a five-minute restroom break, then we can swap out and move other guys up.
Thank you very much for the little break there. Sorry, we're running a little bit behind, but we're glad to have Kannapolis City Schools for their presentation, so we'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank the board and Mike and the county for moving our meeting today. I do have to go out of town on a flight, so appreciate that. One thing I wanted to say before we got to our presentation is, sitting here, listening to the overall presentation from Finance Department and looking at the agenda, I want to emphasize that collaboration in this county is really good, from my perspective, because we're working with the CVB Board, we work with the EDC, obviously work with the Health Alliance. So when one part of the budget goes one way or another, it usually impacts everything that goes on in the school. So when you're voting on this budget and you're voting on an increase at RCCC, it's going to help us, or you're voting on capital in one place versus another, it's going to help the schools, too. So our collaboration with agencies in this county, Boys and Girls Club, Forest Street, YMCA, all those folks, it makes a big difference. So when you do vote on this budget, it's more than just individually voting on the CVB, or the EDC, or Kannapolis City Schools, or Cabarrus County Schools. It's voting on all the things that impact our kids, and I want to thank you. And Will is going to take over.
Good afternoon. I also want to thank you for allowing us to be here and present our budget request. We'll start off with four sections. First one being current expense continuation, section two being current expense expansion, three, capital outlay less than 100, and four, capital outlay greater than 100. When I get to continuation, while it's not listed on here specifically, I just want to comment on our technology collaboration that we have with Cabarrus County Government, and how beneficial that's been to Kannapolis City Schools, and the ongoing support of the technology lease for hardware that we have with you that has been great, and it's allowing us to go places that we could not have gone without it. We're hoping that will continue. Like I said, it's not necessarily listed on here, but we do have, after working and getting feedback from Cabarrus County Government Technology Department, plan on leasing Chromebooks and iPads, and also purchasing some teacher laptops with that this year. So thank you for providing that to us, and just hope that that continues. When we get to technology, the one thing that we have had expense for, that we really don't have a line on them for, that I've asked for for the last few years, I'd like to see is technology software. We've done a great job hardware, we've got dedicated funding for that, but we have about $403,000 worth of expense every year of software. I don't want to call them leases, but more like subscriptions for educational software, for business software, across the board, that we would like to have a dedicated source of funding, much like we do for the computer hardware. That was our number-one priority. Our second priority is increased supplement pay to 7.5%. I think we're at 6.5 now, 6.25 on your all's budget. So that's a big increase, but we want to try to keep pace with Cabarrus County Schools and try to eventually, at some point in time down the road, be apples-to-apples with Cabarrus County with that. Increased pay for teacher assistants and bus drivers. This has been a sore spot for our system for the last few years. We're having a continued hard time trying to compete, especially with your Charlotte Mecklenbergs, who increased their minimum bus driver pay to $15 an hour, and are competing school districts. And not only that, competing with Amazon and the service industry positions for those workers, for our TAs and bus drivers. So we're in desperate need of increasing that pay to a more competitive level for the county. And then, of course, for increased benefits, I already know the retirement is going to go up for, from the state perspective, insurance is also going to go up from the state perspective. So just increasing the benefits for people that we have on the local payroll. As we have started doing in the last few years, we break that out by county. So we, right now, we're approximately 76% Cabarrus County, 24% Rowan County. So for Cabarrus County, that would be one million, a little over $1 million for the continuation.
Will, I've asked this question before, and I'll ask it again. How did things evolve so that your supplement is not apples-to-apples with Cabarrus County?
For the longest time, we, our supplement was a set amount based on a tier. So if a teacher had X number of years' experience and had a master's degree, they would make a set amount. But if they just had a bachelor's degree and had this, they would make a set amount. Whereas Cabarrus has been on a percentage basis. So last year, year before last one, we moved to a percentage basis ourselves, so we could become more apples-to-apples with Cabarrus. Well, at that time, when we converted the amount of money that we had been using for supplements to percentage, the percentage that we could pay was much less than what Cabarrus was paying at that time. So we've been trying to catch up to them over the last couple of years. The problem with that is, they're also trying to move forward, so we're trying to catch up as they move forward. So that's why you're seeing a, we're requesting a big jump, because we're having to take bigger steps to try to catch them, to be able to be apples-to-apples.
So are you now apples-to-apples on who is receiving the supplements? At one point in time, that wasn't the case, if I remember correctly.
That's correct. We did make that change when we went to the percentage, that only teachers and principals are really the only people that receive a supplement now in our district. So we are apples-to-apples with Cabarrus County on that.
Thank you.
These are requests that we have that would expand our budget this year. And when we look at these, we meet with teachers, principals, the board, we try to meet with every group within the school system to develop these and come out as a whole, as far as these requests. And priorities. So priority one is English as a second language teacher. This year, I believe this is the first year, Dr. Buckwell, that we are a majority Hispanic district?
Yes, we are.
So that's, thus priority one. Priority two, resource teacher, elementary school. Priority three, instructional coach, high school. Priority four, translator, system-wide. Priority five, technology leader, system-wide. We have been without a technology director for two years.
Two years.
Priority six, enhancement teacher, elementary. Priority seven, beginning teacher support. And priority eight, two class-sized teachers at the Kannapolis Middle School. So here again, with the 76-24 split, that's $480,234.88. We'll be asking for Cabarrus County for that. Any questions on expansion? I'm not going to go through everything here, because this is a pretty big list, but this is the capital outlay, less than $100,000. You know, it ranges from lines to sun shades, to floor, to roof repairs, to you name it. The one thing that I would mention, and I'd be remiss if I didn't, we also have security camera needs within Kannapolis City Schools. We just didn't request them as a system-wide. So if we had, ours would have been within the CIP also, because we have Forest Park, AL Brown, and Kannapolis Middle School, and I believe that goes up to $140,000 if it's requested as a system-wide project. So I just got to throw the plug in for that one, for us, so. But as you can see here, playgrounds, security entrance, on down the list. Comes to a total of $4 million, $4,021,000. Cabarrus County portion of that would be $3,055,960. Greater than 100,000. And I do want to point out a couple here. One, AL Brown High School replaced Cannon Gym. That's listed at $200,000. I do not think that possibly, it would be possible to replace it for that. We are in the process now of hiring an engineering firm to give us an estimate of what it would be to bring that building up to code, to be able to use it again. You may or may not know, we have that building closed right now, because we were told by an instructional engineer that it was not safe. So that's a big concern of ours, just wanted to point that out. We also have some projects on here that have received funding and that we're working on, but we're not done when we did this CIP. So as you can see, the paving at Parent Drive, you all have provided funding for that, and you all have provided funding for paving at AL Brown. We've also received funding for field replacement and Wonder Career Center from Rowan County. So we just chose to leave those on there, because they were not completed when we did this capital outlay, but they'll definitely come off next year. So, and there you see the replaced track turf. I'll also point out that some of the HVAC upgrades, we're hoping to have taken care of with our guaranteed energy savings project. We're still very much in pursuing that. To give you an update of where we are on that, we are scheduled to hopefully meet with the local government commission the first part of June to secure that project, and probably close on that project late June, early July. So that's going to provide about $3.5 million worth of HVAC renovations, lighting upgrades, and other things that would directly come off these lists, so. I'll also point out, with Cabarrus at 76%, you'll see Woodrow Wilson Elementary School below that. We did not include that, any of that cost in with Cabarrus request, because we are asking Rowan to solely fund that, because you all solely funded the middle school, so fair is fair. So that's why that is not in any of Cabarrus's amount, but is it within Rowan. So $16 million for Cabarrus, and with the school under Rowan, $35 million for Rowan. Any questions on over 100,000? Once again, I'd just like to thank you all for the opportunity of being here and being able to present our budget, and just ask if you have any questions in general you'd like to ask Dr. Buckwell.
Will, is the Woodrow Wilson, is that in Rowan?
It is, it's solely in Rowan.
Solely in Rowan, okay, I thought it was, thank you.
Jackson Park's the one that's split. It's part in Rowan, part in Cabarrus County, literally.
And the middle school that we fully funded, 24% roughly of the students going there are Rowan County students, right?
On any given year, yes, sir.
So why did we not ask them for 24% of that expense?
That's always been a-
Good question.
A good question. I'll leave it at that.
Stop it.
Better question when we get the answer back, if they're going to fund the new elementary school.
Exactly.
It's all in Rowan County.
Yeah.
And do any Cabarrus students go there?
Yes, we have Cabarrus students and Rowan students pretty much at every school, maybe Shady Brook would be the exception, because Fred L. Wilson and Carver are magnet schools. So I'm sure we have Rowan County residents at those two places. And literally, the county line sign is about a block and a half away from Woodrow, and the county line runs through Jackson Park. So there's Cabarrus County and Rowan County kids at both places. Part of the answer, though, is that Rowan County has participated in funding other projects. So over time, we probably need to go back and figure out exactly what those numbers look like in percentage-wise.
And we've been in active talks with Rowan County about funding, you know, proportionate shares, given what Cabarrus has funded, so.
And I don't know that that's gone on before, but we have actively pursued that.
Any other questions for Kannapolis City Schools? We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I think Economic Development Corporation is up next, and we have you scheduled for 5:30 to 5:45. So if you can get us back on schedule, that would-
Mr. Chairman, you know you're asking the wrong person that question. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. On behalf of the Cabarrus EDC and its Board of Directors, we always appreciate the opportunity to come and present to you and the partnership, the longstanding partnership that we've had. I can echo the comments of some of the other departments as far as what happens here to our corporation as well as theirs certainly has an effect on one another. We certainly see that. What I wanted to do is go through what would be more of a program-focused presentation for you this evening. Being with the time constraints that we have, we're going to talk about the, you know, state of the economy and strategic targets, and what we're seeing as far as growth patterns, different things like that. That's probably a much longer conversation that is going to take a little bit longer than 15 minutes for us to go through. So I'm going to talk more specifically about just our organization and the year that we've had as of recent. So from an agenda standpoint, we're going to go through big changes, fiscal year 19 highlights, some program of work items, and then finally, our budget request. As we already know, budget request, we plan to keep that the exact same that it's been in years past, at $400,000. But first, big changes, I can tell you, any one of these big changes that's taken place, they in themselves would be a large item, but we've had a lot of big changes in this past fiscal year. But first, real quick, is our mission, which is to increase the quality of life of Cabarrus County through the creation of high-impact jobs and new tax investments. These types of projects that we talk about are projects that would not locate in Cabarrus County were it not for the efforts of economic development and the partners that we work with, many of you, as well as the other departments that we work so closely with. Big changes as it relates to our team. We've hired on two new team members. First, Samantha Grass, our recruitment project manager, has been a longtime employee with Cabarrus EDC, has done an exceptional job for us, and I want to thank her for all of her leadership and her work as of recent in this past fiscal year, as we've gone through so many changes. Paige Castrale is our new existing industry director. She joined the team in October of 2018. She's had to hit the ground running and done a wonderful job for us, so we're excited to have Paige on board as well. I can also tell you that Chanel Varner will be our new economic development coordinator that will be starting with us on May the 28th, so we're excited to have Chanel on board as well. And then I'm here, of course. I can tell you, one of the biggest focuses of our corporation is having mission-focused employees. Everybody that is on our team is truly focused on, why are we here? What are we here to do? We're to improve the quality of life of our community through creating wealth generation for its residents, as well as wealth generation for our taxing entities, both the cities as well as the counties, and we live that mission each and every day. So big changes as it relates to marketing. We've entered a new partnership with Perry Productions. One of the things that happens, because we're such a project-focused organization, is that telling our story typically comes post or secondary to our operations, when it's between us handling, managing, and working through project activities, whether it be new or existing industry. Typically, us finding the time to tell our story, or get that story out to, whether it be our elected leadership, the community at large, that sometimes is the first thing that falls away due to our bandwidth, being a small team that we are. So what we've done is we've brought on Perry Productions to use storytelling to engage both our internal and external community, internal being Cabarrus-centric, external being our target markets, whether it be site consultants, brokers, or our major pipelines. We talked to them about existing industry resources, the roles and impacts of economic development, success stories of Cabarrus County businesses, and then we've been working on what we call content development, developing messaging targeted to site consultants and brokers, specifically targeting workforce development initiatives, targeted industries and data to support that, and then also available product, which in certain aspects, we have a lot of product to offer the market, so we want to make sure that the right audiences fully understand that. Other big changes, and this is something that I believe that this board is fully aware of, is there was the recent merger of the Charlotte Regional Partnership and the Charlotte Chamber of Commerce. Through, I served as an executive board member on the Charlotte Regional Partnership. We saw redundancy and overlap through those two corporations, and so what has ultimately happened is the merger of those two entities. We've recently brought on a CEO, Janet LeBarre, from Portland, Oregon, that is formerly, has ran regional economic development corporations, and so this is supposed to be a much more streamlined organization focused on economic development efforts at a regional level, and is supposed to remove a lot of funding redundancy that took place between CRP and the Charlotte Chamber. I can also tell you that the Business Alliance has asked for Cabarrus EDC or myself to serve as a Board of Trustee. We're the only EDC in the Charlotte region that has been asked to do that, so we're now, I've agreed to serve as one of their Boards of Trustees on the Charlotte Regional Business Alliance. So, from a regional voice, we will certainly have that with this organization. So, fiscal year 19 in review thus far, we have not completed the fiscal year. We still have multiple projects in our pipeline that we believe will potentially announce before the end of this year, but here's where we are so far. We have worked 155 projects. I can tell you, based on my knowledge of economic development throughout the state of North Carolina, we've probably worked more projects than just about any other community or county in the state of North Carolina, with the exception of probably Durham, Chapel Hill, and Charlotte. We see a vast amount of project opportunity. 145 of those projects that we worked were new, 10 of those being existing. Average jobs per project was 230. The average square foot demand per project was 113,000. 47 of those projects were international projects. $83 million was the average investment per project, and 60 acres was the average demand of site per project. I can tell you, our community, I don't want to call it a problem, I think of it as opportunities, we do not have a project activity problem, we have a product problem. That's something we'll talk a little bit more about here in the upcoming slides. There's no shortage of demand for businesses that want to be here located in Cabarrus County. Our problem is finding the real estate available for them to actually fit in our community, and that's what we've continued to see as being our biggest struggle. Projects by source, you see our two major lead sources, the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, we've worked 62 projects with them, the Charlotte Regional Business Alliance, we've worked 57 projects with them, 16 broker-driven projects, 12 economic development partner-driven projects, and eight direct projects. And then also, you can see projects by industry. By far and away, manufacturing projects dominate our pipeline. We're seeing more manufacturing-demanding projects than anything else. You can see we have a small number of both office as well as distribution projects also. So, our numbers so far, we've announced 309 new full-time head-of-household jobs. We've announced $76 million worth of new tax investment. That $76 million of new tax investment generates $547,000 of annual tax revenue after any incentives provided, and what's important to note is that is an ongoing number for each year of those corporations' existence. We can expect that number to be generated in community for now until eternity. We never count back, but it's important to note that this is just these years' investments moving forward that you can expect from those announcements. As mentioned, we, oh, sorry, we received 145 new business RFIs and responded to 128 of those RFI requests with either a building and/or a site. We announced new industrial spec of over 1 million square foot in total. An important item to note, as we've been talking about diversification and working more towards advanced manufacturing companies and more job-focused projects, we see that those investments are higher as well as the job quality is better in comparison to logistics and distribution projects. 700, approximately 700,000 square feet of that 1 million square foot number are all what we call flex industrial spaces. Four new buildings have come online this year, ranging anywhere from 130,000 to 170,000 square feet, which is a really, really good flex industrial footprint that we've been looking to bring online in the community. We are excited about that. And then business retention and expansion visits, we've had 50 and estimate a total of 60 before the years then.
Robbie, before you move forward, can you go to the previous slide?
Yeah, sure.
The one before that, the 80 million. Okay, so, average investment per project. And then the next slide makes it sound like the total dollars was only 79 when that slide showed average of 80, so.
So, okay, hang on, let me make sure I understand. So, you're saying average investment per project is $83 million. That's aggregating basically our total projects worked, 150, 55 projects worked, basically taking an average of those. So, you'll have projects that are certainly on the high end. When you talk about us having the grounds at Concord as well, that's now generating multi-billion-dollar projects, two projects that are, you know, $5, $10 million, it gives you kind of this blended average that could be misleading. One of the better things that we could probably do is tell you how many projects fall into what investment category.
Okay, but I guess what I was, when it says, the next slide, two slides over, the total for 19 is only 76.
So far, yeah, that's correct.
So, the first slide was projects in the total. So, that first slide-
Are projects in the pipeline, all RFIs that we received, and then the 76 are projects that were actually announced.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you. See? Hit the ground running.
And she did run up here, so. So, while you're on this one, where it says 145 and you responded to 128, so that was 17 that you didn't. Was there any one thing in common that you didn't, or it was all just kind of different?
Yeah, as I say, each project's got a different reason for which. So, what you, in this, in the world of economic development, you want to make sure that, A, you have projects that absolutely qualify for any type of consideration. To send it to, whether it be a site consultant or one of your pipelines, actually degrades their respect for you as an organization as far as your ability to answer the call when it's coming. So, there's a lot of different reasons. Sometimes it could be the square footage requirement, office requirement, it could be height requirement, it could be pricing. I mean, it really can, and that's something that we also study and we can share too. We have pretty, we measure, we're like baseball, we measure just about everything that we possibly can, and we can certainly go into more detail of that. FY19, so we've also continued on our website, a lot of the project activity that we see, we know in today's current time, it's data that's being garnered and pulled from our website before contact is ever being made with our office. We realize that, we recognize that, and actually, we've got some tools to where we can see who's looking at us so that we can get creative about how we make contact and outreach to them. So, we've continued to revise and work through our website, making sure that it's absolutely exceptional in terms of the user experience. We also just recently held an industry appreciation event on April 16th at K1 Speed. We invited all of our large industrial partners to come and join us for a multi-hour racing that we did. We had over 200 attendees. Really, it's a very, it's an existing industry event to where we simply just tell them how much we appreciate both the jobs that they've created as well as the investment that they continue to bring to our community, and it's our small opportunity for us to show them how much we appreciate everything that they do in the community. We've dramatically grown that. This is the second year that we've done that event, and we're excited we had over 200 attendees or close to 200 attendees that joined us for that day. So, I mentioned product development. So, our simple idea is frankly that we believe that with increased intelligence of development dynamics, Cabarrus County will be able to make more informed decisions of how we develop and compete in the future. So, to date, this has been, what I will say, is a large process that we've been working through. We've created a product development subcommittee. We've begun working through a county-wide industrial asset evaluation, and we've began to create a product asset visualization effort. What I mean by that is, is we want to enable both from the county's perspective as well as from each municipality's perspective to understand how value is generated in the community. If you've got industrial park property or industrial zone property, we want you having direct understanding of how much revenue is that generating to your community? How many jobs is that generating for your community? What industrial property do you have that's fully developed? And what is that creating in terms of revenue? What is underdeveloped? And what is missed opportunity as it relates to underdeveloped industrial property? What we'd like to do long-term is be able to equip this council as well as other city and townships with the understanding of industrial property, this is how it pays your bills, and then understanding also how commercial development as well as residential development, the impacts that they have upon the community as well. We would love to be able to get to that level of detail. We've been working with Cabarrus County's GIS team. Also, we'll be working with your tax department as well to basically put what we would consider as a industrial report card of this is how much industrial property you have available for development in community, this is how much revenue it's generating for your community, this is how many jobs it's generating on average. We think with that data, it's going to equip this council to start understanding some underlying dynamics of how revenue is generated from a county standpoint and municipal standpoint, and enable us to make some better strategic decisions moving forward of how we want to develop. And that's basically what these bullets kind of covered, is deeper understanding of how community and wealth generation exists, community-wide reporting on industrial availability and site readiness, and then hopefully, with that increased knowledge, that'll enable us to create pathways for product development and our improved ability to compete on projects. If we really know at the end of the day, long-term tax revenue generation, job generation, I think it'll equip us with better tools of how we want to compete on projects. The projects that we want to win, this should give us better tools and the ability to win those projects. So, looking ahead, our target industry clusters, they don't dramatically change year over year, it's based on who we are as a community. We see advanced manufacturing probably constitutes 80% of where our strategic targets are. Financial services, health, logistics, and distribution, that's something that we say lightly, basically catering and understanding logistics and distribution and what best projects, not all projects are created equal, but understanding which logistics and distribution projects hold the highest and best value to us. Information technology as well as destination entertainment. I would say destination and entertainment for us, we're one of the few communities that has the ability to compete as a destination in partnership with our CBB in many ways that most communities cannot do so, and we recognize that, and we've been in close partnership with the CBB on how do we land and locate new businesses. Last year, you know, iFly was a perfect example of an announcement that we made that will provide ongoing tax revenue, sales revenue to this community, and also adds quality of life assets to this community as well, so we're excited to have them. Our recruitment partners will continue as follows, Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, Charlotte Regional Business Alliance, site consultants, local, regional brokers and consultants, as well as our existing industry partners. So, business retention and expansion, we plan to improve email communication and provide more resources and connections digitally. Plan to continue to increase our attendance at annual industry appreciation events and consider adding even smaller events that cater to plant managers, C-suite, and other decision-makers. We plan to engage and collaborate with CTE directors, Cabarrus County Schools, Connel City Schools as it relates to county-wide workforce development, communicating with industry stories and elected leadership and general public, and maintain our site visits and tours. The second to the bottom bullet is a really important one for us. Economic development is kind of operated behind the scenes for a very, very long time. It's just been the nature of the industry. With projects, for instance, like, you know, HQ2, that's kind of thrust our industry into the spotlight, our team has chosen to embrace that and say, we really want the general public, the community, to understand the dynamics of what we're working with. So, we're trying to take that challenge on in partnership with Perry Productions and educate them as to why does economic development exist? Why do we do the things that we do? Why do incentives exist? Some of those questions could be considered taboo. Those are things that we really want to actively engage with the general public and give them a healthy understanding of why we do the things that we do in this community. Any questions? I know I kind of went through that very quickly. Anything that I might have missed or anything I can add value to?
Well, I certainly appreciate the last comment you made about existing industry and making the general public more aware. Some of those industry visits that I've been able to participate in, every time I walk away saying, I had no idea. I had no idea what was going on here and what folks were doing there, and I think that's certainly true of most folks in Cabarrus County. We've got a lot, a lot of things going on behind the scenes that people just aren't aware of, so I think that's really helpful.
Yeah, I mean, we think of it as we have over 200,000 advocates in this community that if we can equip them with knowledge, the data that they want to know and understand, whether as it relates to existing industry or new businesses or why we do, if we can actively engage and clear some of those, you know, miscommunications or misunderstandings, we think that leaves a lot of opportunity for healthy, positive growth in the future.
Any other questions for Robbie or his team? We thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay, and I think next up is Cabarrus Health Alliance, and I see those folks anxiously sitting on the front row.
Good evening, everyone, and my name is James Mack. I am the board chairman, and again, we again, thank you for the opportunity to give you our presentations towards our budget this year, and we will have two presenters, Sue Yates, which is our CFO, and we'll also have Dr. Russ Suter, who will also be making part of the presentation, and we will begin with Sue Yates. We also have Dr. Fred Pilkington here, so if we have any questions, any assistance, he can help us also.
Thank you for having us this afternoon. We are requesting a total budget request of $7,526,368. This is an increase, whoops, apologize, of $4,910,56. This budget includes the yearly merit and fringe increases as well as a one and a half position for school health. Our expansion item is $200,000 for support of our clinical services. This will be an ongoing need for Cabarrus Health Alliance, so we are requesting this as an ongoing item for our future budgets and not just a one-time request. Dr. Suter will provide information regarding the need in our community for some of the women's health services that we provide at Cabarrus Health Alliance.
Can you get a clicker?
Yes.
I think I got ahead of myself there a little bit, but the need for clinical services, especially prenatal care, the management of women who are pregnant in our county is very important because it's been demonstrated in the medical literature for years that what you put into prenatal care, you save on the other end with handicapped children going all the way up to adolescents. And is, I'm not sure how to go backwards on this thing. Okay, there we go. Okay, so if we're just going to look, let's look what's happened in Cabarrus County here since 2009 with funding for clinical services at Cabarrus Health Alliance. We were getting clinical services up through fiscal year 2009, and then it stopped, and at that time, we were basically getting, 24% of the monies coming to the Cabarrus Health Alliance from the county were for clinical services, and that added up to about $850,000 a year. And that's been going on for 10 years that we haven't gotten that $850,000, so it's about $8.5 million that we didn't have available to use. I would just like to take a little aside here and just mention that taking care of pregnant women is not a very profitable enterprise in medicine. If you look at hospitals, they gussy up their labor and delivery units to attract women and families, and it's very effective in getting families to come to a certain hospital, but they don't make a lot of money on that. They make their money in surgery and radiology, things like that. So, maternal fetal medicine or, you know, pregnancy medicine isn't a major moneymaker. However, I'm going to go on to show here, I hope, just how effective the dollars that are spent for that are in terms of returns, and I'm talking about economic returns. Of course, there's always the returns on, you know, the health and well-being of our children, which is quite important just for that reason alone. children, which is quite important, just for that reason alone. Okay, so, if we're going to look at the measures of prenatal care and the quality of prenatal care, you look at infant mortality rates, the number of infants born prematurely, or low birth weight. Low birth weight actually means babies born prematurely, or born below the weight they should be at, most often because of some kind of placental dysfunction, which in turn is related to a lot of medical problems that mothers will bring into the pregnancy, like uncontrolled, poorly-controlled diabetes, hypertension, things like that. And then, looking at the number of extreme low birth weight infants is very important because it's your extreme low birth weight infants that give you the serious long-term maladies. For instance, you know, if you deliver a baby under three pounds, there's a significant risk of what's called retro-lental fibrodispasia, which is going to cause a visual acuity diminish, diminished visual acuity, and even blindness. You know, you get bronchopulmonary dysplasia, respiratory distress, respiratory problems for the rest of their life can ensue, neuromuscular disease, including cerebral palsy, which are lifelong illnesses, necrotizing enterocolitis, which is a bowel dysfunction, can require surgical resection of bowel in very premature babies. All these things, of course, horrible for families, but they're also horrible to finance for the rest of that child's life. Let's look at some of the data here. This is, the red is Cabarrus County, the blue is North Carolina. The numbers are the number of deaths per thousand live births. So, you can see, in Cabarrus County, we're below the state, and we had the ridiculously low number of 4.2 in the 2008 to 2012. But even with the slight uprise after that, we're significantly below the state of North Carolina, our state. We look at babies born under 2,500 grams, that's five pounds, eight ounces. We're also, again, below the state of North Carolina. This is percentages, this is not per thousand. So, we're in the kind of the 8.7% are below, are low birth weight. The state's up to around 9, 9.1%. And these are the babies that really matter in terms of the amount of disease that they have from their prematurity. And we've been stable at 1.5%. The state's coming down, but we're still below the state. And I work with the Pregnancy Medical Home Initiative, which was run by the Community Care of North Carolina since 2011, and that's been eight years. And I've had the question posed to me, "What are you doing in Cabarrus County? You're doing something very right." You know, I'm here as the medical director for the Cabarrus Health Alliance since 2004. I cannot take credit for these numbers because the real credit that is deserved is on the part of the adjunctive services that exist in our building. You know, from social services, to dental services, to lab services, to WIC, and on and on and on. I mean, these patients have trouble getting out of front door because somebody's grabbing them, bringing them into a room, and finding out what they need, and giving, getting it for them. And that's how you change patients' lives. They have very short time in front of the doctor. They have plenty of time in front of your social services and those support services. And that's why Cabarrus County is doing very well. If we look at the number of babies who received quality prenatal care from CHA since 2008, over 10,000 women. Approximately 50% have, you know, insurance and form of Medicaid, but most of them, 50% do not. They're self-pay. Many of them can't pay the full amount. We've developed our own OB care management program so that they pay, you know, $35 per visit during their pregnancy, and they get their whole pregnancy taken care of for $400, $450. And the women come in. If you raise the price much higher than that, they don't come in. They don't come in and get their prenatal care. State funding for maternal health services has remained stagnant since '78. The number of women cared for at CHA through that 10-year period has been 15, 18% of all the women delivered in Cabarrus County. That's between 400 and 500 women. The prenatal care value, in the industry, in medicine, it's given principle that for every dollar you spend on prenatal care, you save up to, up to $11 per patient in neonatal, early childhood, school age, and adolescent remedial care. Now, that depends on the amount of penetrants you have of high-risk women in your OB clinic. And we have quite a few high-risk women. We have a whole day every Monday that I come there. Now, I'm partially retired. I work all day Monday, and that's for the high-risk ladies. And our nurse practitioners work the rest of the week. And it's a lot of savings for the Cabarrus Health Alliance, but you need a doc there when you're dealing with the high-risk patients. So, we have a significant share of high-risk patients. At $11 of savings per patient, we saw 599, if you look at 2018, we saw 599 patients. It's $972,000 that we put out to see those 599 patients through the year. The $10,696,000 is the, what it would cost for us if we had no prenatal care, and we paid all those back costs I was talking about. And the total savings would be $9,700,000 because you would subtract the $972,000 from because we wouldn't be having prenatal care. But, I mean, look at the expenditure down the road that you could anticipate. If you were going to, if you were going to use, I've also got it figured out for $6.50 difference, and it's more like a savings of $5, $5.5 million. But the savings nevertheless are very real. If you were to look into medical literature now to try to find out whether prenatal care is justifiable from an investment standpoint, you'd have to go back 50 years because that question was answered in the 1970s. There's no question anymore that putting your money into prenatal care is going to get you healthier babies and healthier moms, and it's going to save you money down the road. So, that, the only thing you're going to find in the medical literature now relative to prenatal care is how do you get better access to it? And how do you improve the quality of that prenatal care? Because we can always do that. In Cabarrus County, I think we've got very good quality. I mean, those numbers I put up, those data points I put up, show that we're doing something right, and we certainly open our doors to everybody and encourage access. We're about ready to start a substance-use network clinic strictly for substance-using pregnant women. They contribute a lot of sick babies. The week before I retired, last June, a 22-week woman came in, delivered a baby that died shortly after birth on heroin with no care whatsoever. We're going out after those women because we think we can get them to come in and take care of them and change their lives and get healthy babies. Yeah, so, the value of prenatal care is absolute. There's no questioning it. I mean, it's demonstrated. It's on the record. And what I hope tonight is that we can access, get access and quality prenatal care for Cabarrus County for years to come. We need some money to help us. The reimbursement for prenatal care is just not very rigorous, very robust. So, if you could give us the money that we're asking for, I think we can continue to deliver the scare. Right now, I'm down to one day a week, and we look over the nurse practitioners to save money. I mean, I was full-time up through June. We can't really cut back anymore without paring away muscle and bone. All the fat's gone. So, the other thing I wanted to point out, personnel cost is 90% of the cost for maternal health care. You know, you've got to have an RN in public health. We work on what's called standing orders. I put all the standing orders out, and the nurses basically run the place under those orders. LPNs and medical assistants can't work under standing orders. And LPNs and medical office assistants, like they hire in private practice offices, can't educate patients. We depend on education for prevent, for prevention, and for nutrition, and that's another way to save dollars. You don't wait until people get sick, and then you treat them with all the drugs. It's just not cost-effective, okay? Also, we have to have five RNs because, you know, we're mandated by the state of North Carolina to do huge workups on these women. When they come in for a new OB visit, we have to get a comprehensive medical psychosocial history, which includes, I wrote down some of these things because when I see a new OB patient, it's like reams of material I've got to go through. But it's lead exposure, there's eight questions, nutrition screening, 11 questions, psychosocial screening, 22 questions, PHQ9 depression screen, nine questions with 27 possible answers that, you know, you may have to ask questions about intimate partner violence, and on and on and on. These kind of things, private practices don't, they don't get into. They don't have to, so they don't do it. But again, it's good for our citizenry and our county, and I think it's wonderful that we do it. But it takes, you know, an hour to prepare a woman who's coming in for a new OB visit because of all the questions that are posed, and then we have to look through all that as a provider. And so, that, and when they come in for a pregnancy test, we're also checking to see if they've got uncontrolled diabetes, or if they've got problems with hypertension. Because we have an opportunity to give them what started on medications the day they get their pregnancy test, that baby's in the uterus for one week less with that problem out of control. So, we want to get to them as early as possible, get the meds on board when they need meds because that, you get better outcomes when you do that. But all this adds up to labor-intensive, high-cost medical employees. Like I said, scope of services for nurses is very broad at the Public Health Department because we have to do that. If we can't put, you know, three or four doctors over there, it would be too costly. Okay? And thank you so much for your time tonight. If there's any questions that I can answer, I'd be more than happy to do that.
I guess I would ask about the demand. Are we, have we been turning people away? Or is it more about making folks aware of the services and encouraging them to come in to not avoid? They think it's not available to them.
Well, we've got several, you know, separate populations. Hispanic population generally, because, you know, they don't have Medicaid, try to get by with fewest number of visits as they possibly can. So, they'll come in late oftentimes, and they'll come in for less frequent appointments. Now, if you find a problem and you speak to them, they'll respond usually and increase the number of visits and respond. They're very responsible from that standpoint, but understandably, they don't want to spend any money, any more money than they have to. Our substance-use population is not a population that trusts medical care whatsoever in any case. Because they're always afraid of, you know, they're going to lose custody of their child when it's born. They feel very stigmatized and ashamed because they're using, you know, drugs while they're pregnant. And historically, medicine hasn't been very open-armed and welcoming to these patients, but we're changing. We're learning that it's a chronic disease. So, we're going to go out and recruit these people by putting together a collaborative network and making those people know, those ladies know, that they're welcome, and we want to take care of them. And, you know, I very routinely now tell every woman that comes in with a substance-use problem how proud I am that they're there because, you know, they're overcoming a huge stigma and a lot of care, concern about whether that's going to cost them their child, and yet they come in for the prenatal care. And it's quite compelling to see the response on the part of these patients who, you know, they tear up because they don't hear many compliments. But the point of the matter is, the Cabarrus Health Alliance goes out and tries to access patients aggressively. We open our doors and make everything basically available. We're constantly asking them if we can do this, if we can do that. We're sending them, you know, to one door or another within the building. We've got a wonderful building over there, really never could believe we'd get a building that nice. It's wonderful. And we have plenty of room to move these patients around and see them and take care of them. So, I think access is very good. We're certainly always working on quality. But getting them to come in, you know, I don't know how to go out to the street and get them to actually come in. Word of mouth gets out there. If you're, you know, kind and you're really sincere about helping them, it makes a difference, especially with the substance-use disorder crowd. I mean, that's a very important one.
One issue that we're seeing this year is the birth rate in the county is down about 20%, which means our numbers are down about 20%. But the patients that are coming in have higher and higher needs and higher and higher risk. So, we don't have the baseline base of reimbursements to come in to help care for some of the higher-risk patients.
Sue, what causes the higher need?
Substance use, additional folks that can't prove residency, so they can't have Medicaid. However, they're pregnant, and they're going to deliver a baby in our county. And they don't have all the knowledge and research and materials that we have about nutrition and prenatal care and things like that.
Opiate use has gone up dramatically over the past 20 years, and our number of NAS babies, you know, in 2017, for 340 out of 365 days, we had a neonatal abstinence syndrome baby in the NICU of our hospital, which is a baby that's withdrawing from, you know, opiate exposure during pregnancy. So, that's a big one. That's why we're trying to form a collaborative network to address that problem.
Just one last question. It's probably a no-brainer, but with the Cabarrus Health Alliance, do we serve primarily Cabarrus County citizens? Do we have people come from other areas that come to seek help with us?
Typically, about 95% are Cabarrus County residents. Occasionally, someone will come in from Stanley County or Rowan who, nobody will see them because they have a substance-use issue, and they have nowhere else to go. A lot of times, that's Kannapolis city residents that come to us, but the majority of our patients are Cabarrus County.
Okay, any other questions? We thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and so, now I think we are scheduled for a 15-minute break, so we will do that for, and come back as about 5 until 7.
Okay, well, I hope everybody enjoyed that short break, and we are happy to be back. And welcome to Cabarrus Visitors and Convention Bureau for their presence. Welcome.
Great, thank you. Thank you for having us this evening. On the way here, I thought, "Oh, my gosh, we're here already again." How time flies when you're having fun. So, and that's what we do, is we do have fun, and we make sure our visitors have fun. So, before we get started, just a quick reminder that I know you all are very aware, but we are very fortunate that the CBB has a dedicated funding source via occupancy tax collection through the hotels. So, no local residents are paying for occupancy tax in our budget, so just as a FYI. And we're not here to ask you for any money. We are here to talk to you and show you our budget so that you can approve that for us so that we can operate next year. So, we are the sales and marketing organization dedicated for the county. And so, I am going to go through some of the things that we have been doing over the last year, and some of our stats. And then, John Mills is going to go through the financials with you. So, first up is the sales department, and talking about group sales. And you will see by the slide that we sent 208 leads. And just as a point of reference, we do not sign contracts. So, our goals are based on lead generation to the hotel properties in Cabarrus County so that they can then actually sign contracts with the meeting planners and event planners that come to the table. So, we're almost like the conduit that attaches both of those people together, and we will do assists and help those hotels get those contract signs, but we do not actually sign contracts. So, we had 208 leads, which equated to $81,200,000. So we had 208 leads, which equated to 81,275 room nights. 78 leads turned definite, which equates to the 26,000 room nights that you see there. And there is a list, and I won't go through and read these, you're quite capable of doing that. But you will notice, I'll point out, that some of those at the bottom are for multiple years and all the way out to the North Carolina School Resource Annual Conference is booked for '23 and '24. So it's a long-range plan. Sometimes it's in the year for the year. Diamond Sports Group with their Summer Shine was something that came to our attention just a few months ago. And we were able to put that together and they won't be playing, they'll be playing and utilizing Central Cabarrus field, football fields. But they will all be staying in Cabarrus, but utilizing Charlotte Mecklenburg High School's football fields other than Central Cabarrus this year. Next year, we hope that they will be able to utilize all of our high school football fields and not use any of them in Mecklenburg. So if anybody has any questions...
Why would you say that? We get the revenue off the tax and the wear and tear goes on their fields.
Well, yeah, but it's not ideal for the group. They would not, if they don't, if they can't play on Cabarrus fields, they will not stay here next year. So that's the, yes, that is a good concept, but it's not good for the meeting planner. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about, oh, before I do this, I'm going to go backwards. I did not include this slide in here, and in hindsight, I probably should have, but I wanted to touch base on some lost business information and to let you know that we lost 116 groups, which equals 43,900 room nights last year. And it was not of any fault of our salespeople, but the majority, and we can send this to you, it's a pie chart, and I can pass it around. It's a pie chart that the majority of those meetings were because, didn't get booked because there was no availability. So lack of supply in the community is a big deal for us. So just so you know, we share this report every month with the Board of Directors, and so they do know how much business we are losing because of lack of facilities. And then the other, the next biggest one is we've lost business to Charlotte and East Coast and the event canceled, and Asheville. So those are the top contenders on why we lost that amount of business that we lost.
Donna, when you say in loss of facilities, you're speaking of hotels, rooms?
Mainly meeting space, not as much rooms as meeting space.
For the viewing audience to understand and for us to understand as well.
Yes, thank you for that. And now I'm going to talk a little bit about something that's out of my realm, but I'm going to try to speak intelligently about all this social media and digital campaign performance. So you will see that we had a little over 41 million impressions, and that is through paid advertising that we have done in the past year. And 164,000 Google Analytics sessions, that is the number of times people visited our website. And 45% of Google Analytics sessions from paid campaigns, and that would be, 55% of those are billboards, foam hats, anywhere that we have our URL. So it could be anything that's kind of static, that has our website address on it, that's what that is. We have a 0.15% click-through rate, which is above the industry standards. And number of visits to things to do section from our paid campaigns is 38,000, and this is also up from last year. Any questions on that one? Now, this is the fun thing we want to talk about. This is our brand-new destination guide. Each of you have one of these in front of you. And once again, we have added the technology in it that we had on the front cover last year. It is not on the front cover this year. The cover is actually a memorial to Sam Bass. This was his 50th running of the Coca-Cola 600 poster. And so we did something a little different, and as a tribute to him, we put that poster on the front. And also, it is the 60th anniversary of the running of the Coca-Cola 600. So that's why it's not that, the way it normally is. But inside, you will see, anywhere you see a tire, which is this little tire symbol, if you hover over the image, the augmented reality technology that we used last year, if you download our app, Visit Cabarrus app, off of either Google or the Apple Store, you can hover over that image and click it, and an actual, it will trigger a video. And there are five of those triggers within the destination and motorsports guide for the visitors to be able to listen to. So it's been a lot of fun, and we are, it has gotten very, very good feedback just in the short time that we've had it out. And it came out in April. It comes out right before NHRA. So if you have any questions, if you would like some of these at your place of business, all you have to do is reach out to the visitor center, and we are happy to deliver those free of charge to you. And something new we embarked on this year are commercials. And these commercials actually ran in a couple feeder markets, and they targeted family millennials with an affinity to racing and travel. So we would like to share both of our commercials. They previewed in the Asheville, the Greenville-Spartanburg area, as well as Columbia, South Carolina. Something special's brewing here, where you can literally taste the excitement. Or just go with the flow. Immerse yourself in our world of racing. Paying for gold like you are living in 1799. Shop until your heart's content. Feel the thunder. Or just honor a legend. Only in Cabarrus County, North Carolina. That was the first one. And then the second one, and just so you know with these, they ran over 10,000 times in the prime time timeframe, which I think is 6:00 PM till midnight, is that what it is? And they were split 50/50, so they played equally amounts of time. Yes, ma'am?
What period of time was that 10,000? I mean, like, three months or?
It's a three-month campaign.
Yeah, it was a three-month campaign. So we saturated the market, and now it's time, our next thing that we will do is put Julie, our PR person, into those communities to do morning talk shows and talk about Cabarrus. So now people are starting to put a face and a picture and, oh, you know, we see her on TV and they go, I saw that commercial last week. So, and here's the second one. Where there's smoke, there's flavor. Where there's bars, there's bourbon. So get into the spirit of things. Make new friends on an underwater adventure. Take it a show, our kind of show. No doubt, we will make you a fan. Listen and learn about music legends, or just enjoy a weekend away. Is all this music to your ears? Then start planning your next vacation to Cabarrus County, North Carolina. So, there you go. This is, I'm going to turn it over to John to talk about numbers.
Hey, exciting. Well, thank you all for the opportunity to come and speak with you. And just to reiterate and express, I think, how fortunate we are as a destination. I always love to lead off with this chart because it really kind of speaks to the growth that we've had here over the last, you know, 15 years. When I started 11 years ago, we were a million and a half organization, and we're bumping up close to $6 million. And you can see through that chart, we've gotten there pretty quickly. And so we're very excited, we're very fortunate that we consistently remain a destination that drives demand. And when you look at us, when the destination continues to invest in itself and find new attractions, like an iFly or a Mustang Owners Museum that opened up last month, it just creates more reasons for people to either want to come here or to extend their stay. So that's one of the things that really continues to drive us as we go through each year. The current budget we're in right now is at 5.757, and we're looking at a budget of 5,895, so it's about a 2.4% increase. And how we get to that number is we look a lot at our history and we look at, see how we've been performing. We look at it on a monthly basis. I actually can tell you by day how the destination's performing. The Wednesday after the previous week finishes, we can tell you exactly how we look. Tomorrow, I can tell you how the All-Star Weekend looked. And so we were able to look at a lot of that information, talk to our hoteliers. We have to look at things, see if things are cycling. So if there's something new that's coming into the destination, it's going to be what we call citywide. In August of 2020, we'll be looking, when we come to you next year, we'll be talking about RNC, because RNC is going to be following in the FY 2021 budget. And that's going to have a significant impact on our revenues for hotels. Or if anything leaves. Unfortunately, this year, we lost Carolina Rebellion, which was a very large event, a very successful event for the hotels in the region. So those are one of, some of the things that we have to look at and take into consideration. If you kind of look at the revenue itself, this is where we like to say, these are, we're bringing you money instead of asking for money. Of course, for those who do not know, the county actually retains 5% of the collections. And so we're almost at $300,000 a year that the county is able to retain and stick into its general fund balance and use for the projects that they see fit. And there's another 5% that's being held, and we started this several years ago. So the same amount's being withheld, but that balance is currently sitting over $1.6 million. There's ongoing discussions that are taking place regarding those dollars. And the ultimate goal is to enhance and expand our current sports facility so we can go after larger events, get events that we're not able to get to because of access to facilities or the types of facilities we have. So we're very excited about the ongoing discussions that are taking place and what's coming down the road. And looking at our budget and seeing how we allocate our dollars, it's kind of three different ways. Obviously, personnel costs are what we call salary and wage expense. There's an administration and operations cost, and then general sales and marketing and what our mission is. The bar, the pie chart on the left is our industry allocation, so we actually work with our peer groups all over the country in doing surveys and trying to see how much they're spending in these categories. And of course, we can benchmark that against ourselves. So if you look at just the blue, left to right, the right side is actually how we're budgeted for next year. We're running about 28.5% in personnel costs versus 37% of our peer groups. And the goal is the green chart. We're sticking in 60.2% into sales and marketing versus mostly about 51.5% versus our peers. So those are very strong numbers. And when you even look at the blue chart for us, that includes our personnel that are involved in sales and marketing, and we're obviously being a sales and marketing agency. It's very people-focused in talking to meeting planners and doing a lot of creative and ad buys and things like that. One change that we'll see next year is we are looking to bump potentially one of our part-timers up to full-time, and that's because of the Concord Regional Airport. We do, for those that do not know that might be listening, we do actually have a satellite visitor center there to greet the Allegiant flights that are coming in, where most people might think that those flights are designated for people coming home for vacation. We know through data that I'm able to source that 37% of the people that are coming and landing on Allegiant every single day are people that are originating out of Florida. And they're coming here for vacation, visit friends and family, business, and then they're going back home to Florida. So we target those visitors. And if you ever see a flight land and you see the rental car lines, they're very long, that tells you there's definitely a purpose there. When you look back at 2014, when Allegiant started coming into the market, there was around 117 flights. Now there's 990 flights. We started this venture with volunteers greeting those flights. And obviously, with the increase, late nights, some of these flights arrive and we need to make sure we have dedicated personnel there to make sure they greet. They're handing them destination guides and trying to capture them before they might go somewhere else and keep that money in market.
Me. It's back to me again. Oh, great, great. We put one of these at each of your places. It's a little laminated cheat sheet is what we call this. We would love for you all to be our cheerleaders and talk about the impact of tourism in Cabarrus County. And this is a little sheet, and most of these numbers come from the state of North Carolina. They provide these to us. And it talks about how much visitor spending was generated, payroll. You know, we produced $106 million in payroll just in Cabarrus County. This is 2017, and those are the earliest numbers that we have. So being able to look at this and talk to your constituents and show them that even though we're not funded by local taxes, that it's an occupancy tax, that we actually save each household $489, they pay $489 less in taxes, local and state taxes, because of visitor spending and tourism coming into this area. So it does benefit the local residents, although sometimes I know it's very frustrating when we have large events here and there's traffic and all of those fun things that we have to deal with. But understanding that those visitors really contribute to the destination and to our local residents also.
Question, Donna.
Yes.
Is that the savings that you're referring to, the 400 and what is it?
It's 489.
Is that coming from state and local sales tax?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that the end of ours?
Yep.
Oh, that's the end. Let me go next one. And so this, we just want to thank you. And this is our team. You know, John and I get to stand up in front of a lot of people on many occasions, but we are not the ones who make this happen. We have a team of very talented individuals, and these are their headshots, actually. We went through and redid the stuffy headshots that we would normally do, and we ask each person and staff member to pick a place or a destination within the destination, and that's where they would have their headshot made. So these are what we use on profile sheets and on our business website. And it's fun to see that if you look at this and, you know, you're a salesperson and you're handing your profile sheet to someone who's thinking about coming here, and they see that your profile picture is having fun in the destination, they're more apt to want to come. So with that said, if you have any questions, we are happy to answer any of those.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a quick question, but I don't want to ask if it's in here. But what is our current occupancy tax rate in Cabarrus County?
6%.
6%, okay. And do we have, is there a chart that shows that in comparison to others around us?
We are legislated, and in our legislation, we cannot go over 6%. We are at the max amount that we are allowed to...
But we don't have to be at 6%.
Pardon me?
Okay. Not everybody's the same.
No.
Right?
Everybody is different.
So how do you get to a difference? I guess what I'm getting at is, I travel a lot and I pay a lot more than I think people are paying here. And I'm curious to know, I want to see what the different rates are in the different area.
We can...
I understand, we don't set that rate, right? That's set at the legislature.
No. Well, the legislative, when they were created, the way they were, but you can go back to the legislature and ask for more if you want, or in some places, only ask for 2% or 3%. It's just when...
Right. The max is 6. That's, okay.
For us, the max is 6.
That's where I was at.
And I will tell you, Charlotte is more, and our, you know, some of the...
The only exception, really.
Yeah, they're really the only exception. But it makes us very competitive when we are trying to sell something. And even if it's an event that's held in Charlotte, we can be competitive in generating the room nights because our tax is lower than theirs.
Okay.
And we're in such close proximity.
Good. Well, so I guess I would like to just see a chart or something of...
We're happy to get that to you.
Who's doing what and what the totals are.
We are happy to do that for you.
I'm glad to hear you say that. If you have an advantage, that's great. So that's good.
Great. Any other questions for John and Donna? We thank you very much and appreciate what you do.
Do we need to suspend the rules?
Yes, please. Pam, did you want to say anything on behalf of the board? I'm sorry, I forgot to...
So the board has seen this budget all the way down to the individual line item, and we've reviewed it. I can't remember how many pages that email was.
How many?
Quite a lot.
Seventy-ish.
Seventy-ish pages. But it was unanimously voted on by the board and supported in the effort. Marketing is the, marketing and sales is the highest effort that we are proposing for funding to be utilized in. And it's been two, three years since Mauer's been there, Mauer?
Yeah, our advertising agency, Mauer.
Mauer. Yeah, so it's been very beneficial to the organization, and a lot of great changes have been made over the last couple of years with them.
Great. So you are asking us to approve your budget tonight?
Yes, sir.
So I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to act on this matter. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the convention and Visitors Bureau budget as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion. I can read if you want.
That's, that sounds good.
The motion to approve the Tourism Authority's fiscal year 2020 budget totaling $5,895,007 in accordance with Article 4, Room Offices and Tourism Development Act, Tourism Authority of the State Code, 42.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time. And we hope to see you at the racetrack this weekend.
Okay. All right. Next up is Cabarrus County Schools, and they are anxiously awaiting. They're on our schedule for 7 o'clock. So I've been asking everybody else to make up lost time in their present. But since you're last, you're off the hook. Yeah. Welcome.
Well, good evening, commissioners and county staff, the board members, and our Cabarrus County Schools staff present. Thank you for the opportunity to review the Cabarrus County Schools budget request with you this evening. We know that you understand the difficult situation which North Carolina public schools face with unfunded state mandates, delivering a quality education, and attracting exceptional staff. We strive to provide an excellent education and safe schools while depending on federal, state, and local funding sources to support our goals for educating the children in Cabarrus County. Regarding teacher salaries for teachers, it is unfortunate that the state salaries push teacher supplements to the local level. As a growth state and county, we must be competitive at both the state and local levels. According to national data that was published in April of this year, the average North Carolina teacher salary has moved North Carolina from a rank of 38th in 2016-17 to 34th in 1718, while all instructional employee salaries remain at a rank of 43rd. We can do better. As stated in the last few years, our request for an increase in teacher supplement is a priority and a serious matter to attract and retain teachers. The currently proposed 0.25% supplement increase in your budget does not improve our position, and we will regress to prior years as compared to our competition. Keep in mind that your supplement currently is 8% of the teacher's salary. It is not the whole salary, obviously. So when the teachers look at a state increase, whatever that might be, 2% or 2.5%, whatever gets passed eventually by both chambers, it's not on their whole salary. It doesn't trickle down to the supplement. We are appreciative of the support to build new schools, providing growth seats for the students who are already living in Cabarrus and those who will be arriving. Our realignment actions recently will help to maximize the seat usage in all schools, as we also prepare to add seats in the new West Cabarrus High School and Hickory Ridge Elementary School. And one of your challenges to us was to maximize the seats that are currently built, and we've done that. Deferred maintenance on existing facilities continues to be a challenge. We look forward to the state's school bond and/or the quarter cent sales tax being approved for Cabarrus County, as this will raise funds from across all consumers, whether local or visiting, just as our neighboring county does. While we hope that the North Carolina Legislature will reverse some of its decisions or delay them, which put an even greater burden on you as the commissioners in charge of the budget and local taxpayers, we are grateful that you continue to place a higher priority on public education. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Lauter and Ms. Klutz now.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to begin tonight by saying thanks to the county and in particular, the county staff. As we've said before, the county staff here has been great for us to work with, the school system. We really do consider them to be partners in trying to figure out how to make all this work. Mike has been great to work with, very honest, puts things out in front of us. Pam, we certainly want to congratulate her on her retirement, but also say how much we appreciate really trying to understand the funding mechanism that is public schools in North Carolina, which is very difficult. And so really going beyond that, I think, to try to understand is something we appreciate. But Kristen and Lauren and Susan and Kyle, they really are all, and Jonathan are all people that our people work with on a regular basis, and we certainly appreciate that because that's not something that everybody can say. So from there, we'll kind of start about our, talk about our budget development, if we can go to the next slide, and how we work on, oh, I'm sorry. I guess I can make us go to the next slide, right? We begin, we do have a large and, a large budget, and we try to include a lot of people. We have about 32 members on our committee, school board members. We have county staff, many of sitting around the table who've attended. We have parents that are part of that, school leadership, business leadership, and then those of us at the county office. So it really is a process that we use and we're proud of. And when we say parents and community members are voting members of that budget, so they are absolutely a part of the budget and part of what we're recommending to you guys tonight. As we start our operating requests, we want to first highlight that first bullet, the general continuation request. This is certainly something that, again, we've worked with your county staff here to try to make sure they understand what it takes just to stay flat, what it takes to not fall behind, which is, you know, any salary that the state gives an increase on, benefit increases, which are usually retirement and hospitalization, and operating expenses for opening up new schools, which you guys know that we do. So just to kind of stay where we're at and continue doing what we're doing without going behind, as you can see, costs about $2.3 million. Last year, it was about $3.2 million. And so beginning the budget process with this staff and you guys as commissioners recognizing that and saying, we've got to start there and make sure we do that, and then look at the budget, is something that, again, we're very fortunate to have. And I can tell you for sure that many counties do not begin there with that process. So we appreciate that, and again, appreciate everyone trying to understand, what does that really mean to make sure that we're not going behind? So again, we really appreciate where we start. Our number one expansion request this year has been, certainly since I've been the superintendent, is to increase the teacher supplement. And then next is teacher allotment and increased mental health responders. And so Ms. Furtinbaugh hit a little bit of the teacher supplement, but that really is our number one request and an area where, as much as you guys have tried to, you know, keep us competitive, the teacher supplement is the area that we're not competitive with counties that are around us. So the salary study that we had done a couple of years ago, that you guys were, have seen and been a part of that, we have, in essence, you have, we have addressed all of the positions in that salary study to at least be average or competitive. The only one of those positions now in our organization that's still not at the average is teachers. And so obviously, the teachers are, we have 4,000 employees, 2,400 of those are teachers, and obviously, a teacher is the backbone of our organization. So if we were going to pick a position that's not competitive, it would not be teachers. And so the teacher supplement is, again, the thing that we're asking for an increase on and certainly need to stay competitive. Just to give you some kind of comparison points, I actually had a few weeks ago, a document that actually came from the County Commissioners Association. I've shared it with Mike and Mr. Morris. So I'm not sure if everybody's seen that or not, but it's a document that the county's presented. And according to that, the average teacher supplement in the state is about $4,300, $4,337. Ours is around $3,100. So to get to the state average, we would have to have a 35% increase in the teacher supplement, just to be at average. So sometimes when you take an average like that, then people kind of say, well, you know, there are bigger districts in there, the Wake Counties, the Charlottes, and that skews it, right? So then I tried to kind of take those out and say, well, we are the eighth largest school district in North Carolina. So, you know, theoretically anyway, we would probably want to be the eighth best supplement. So to kind of look, where do we compare around there? So if we take the two districts, the next two that are bigger than us, so number seven and number six, which are actually Johnston and Union County, and then the four that are actually smaller than us, the next four, which are Durham, Gaston, Onslow, and New Hanover, and you average those teacher supplements, it's actually worse than the state average. So we would be about 45% lower than those counties if we take them and average them. So, you know, again, kind of any way that you slice it, we are, we're behind in this area. And it's an area that is really important to us. So again, I guess just one more comparison. There are 115 school districts in the state of North Carolina. There are 33 school districts that have a better teacher supplement than we do. So again, those are just some relative points of where we land in that. And again, I would tell you that the teacher supplement is our number one recruitment tool. It is the number one way that we recruit and retain teachers. And so being below the average is certainly something that, you know, hurts us in that competition and something that we would certainly want to increase. Next is our technology requests. Again, these are just devices, break, fix, staff, general operations. We have worked with the county staff to try to figure out a way to maintain and get devices on leases, so we're not behind, we're not quite there yet, but we definitely made strides in that area. And we feel good about where we are now, especially if we can get everything on a lease. I would say the area, again, that we have a little bit of pain there is when we grow 600 students each year, then that's in essence a school. Then you need more people to fix computers, be able to work on them, service devices. So having people allotted to those is probably an area where we're a little behind, and that's where those requests come from.
Dr. Lauter, real quick, like...
Yes, sir.
On the technology request, do you have a breakdown somewhere of what, like, each is the devices, break, fix, and software?
Yes. So we've certainly provided to the, to the staff here of how to get those devices on a lease. So I don't have it in front of me, but they have that, you guys have that. The biggest area where we are behind probably is in that staff to be able to service the computer. So I would say the largest request, Kelly may know off the top of her head how that breaks down. I do not. But it's certainly the area that we would say that we're the furthest behind would be in that staff. Because devices, we're not that far behind. It's just a matter of making sure we can pay them recurrently.
Right. What about the software cost? Are we currently budgeting software costs for Cabarrus? Pam, do you know?
He's referring to leases or, well, Kannaple City Schools talked about how they have subscriptions to software. That's what they used.
So we have several sources for technology. Technology, the county provides most of our technology, so our staff and our maintenance costs associated with that. And so, yes, some of our software is purchased out of that pot of money. But we also have funds like Title I funds that you can use software, you can pay for software, you can pay with software with, you know, DSSF funds. Or we have multiple different small pots that we can pay software with. There's an E-Rate account. There's, you know, there's various different accounts. So the county's not our only source of software funds, but we certainly do use some of that money to pay for software.
So of the $1 million, the software would probably be the lesser of the cost?
So our primary cost is staff.
Sure.
Staff and the lease. We have 1.88 that goes to the annual reoccurring lease. And so the other big, big bulk of that is staff.
So I would agree that probably of the ones listed, software probably is the least of the ones that are up on...
The least expensive.
I think so. Yes, sir.
And just to clarify, from a software subscription standpoint, that's just the new term that some companies are using for software licenses. So it doesn't really change. You're still paying an annual fee in some manner. So...
Building and grounds maintenance is certainly, you know, we've talked about deferred maintenance. I would say in this area, it tends to be the same thing. You know, next year, we're going to open up two, a major high school. We're going to open up another elementary school. Again, you have more stormwater ponds, you have more kind of utility stuff. So again, keeping up with that growth as far as people to staff them is probably our biggest need as we continue to grow. And then the last one down there is just charter school transfer requests. I know charter school funding is very confusing and for just about everybody, but it is a pass through that we're given, you guys essentially give us money that we then send to the charter schools. Just an interesting fact, I think, that's for you guys to kind of have in your pocket, is over the last couple of years, certainly even in this funding, the charter schools that are housed in Cabarrus County are losing students. So overall, net loss in students. But more students are going to another county to be educated. So what ends up happening is Cabarrus County taxpayers' money travels with a student to Iredale County for a charter school. And so just kind of fascinating on being able to predict that. And again, I would certainly give the staff a lot of credit for trying to understand that, because it's virtually impossible for us to predict a student that's going to leave Cabarrus County and drive to Iredale County, to Lincoln County. And we have more of those than you would think. So this year, kids in Cabarrus County dropped significantly, but kids going out of county goes up. And so that's primarily where that, that change in money is from. So again, interesting and confusing, but basically the funding, the way that we fund charter schools in North Carolina. Capital Outlay Budget Request, this is, again, give the county a lot of credit here to work to try to get a recurring source of money to tackle our issues. They did that, was that two years ago? And so again, there's always a kind of a recurring need, but to have a source of money there to go back and do, I would say we've put a substantial dent in that, thanks to the way that you guys have decided to figure out how to put a funding source there. And it's just some examples of where that money goes to and how we would use it as we go forward. Deferred maintenance, you guys have kind of seen the charts for that. It's certainly a big struggle for us and for you guys to figure out how to fund. Probably the thing that takes the most amount of time in our budget process is figuring out how to prioritize those when you start talking about safety issues and, you know, flooring and abatement. But again, large request there that continues in each year that get deferred probably gets bigger based on how much we're able, or you guys are able to fund that. Capital Improvement Projects, again, right now, remaining funding for West Cabarrus, buses for new schools, mobiles for growth in size. So what that says, you may not be able to read the line there, everything above the line, you guys have already funded for this school year. And again, we just want to say how much we appreciate the staff and you guys as commissioners trying to understand the need there and understand that if you go ahead and give us the money ahead of time, we can order the buses, so the buses will be here on the first day of school. Same thing with mobile units and being able to move them. So great strides there, I think. And again, just understanding our needs and timing. And you've done that for several years now, and it makes a huge difference in what we're able to do and how we're able to, you know, operate on the first day of school. Also, just kind of want to note, I didn't really think about it until a couple of weeks ago when I was preparing for this, but, so I've been the superintendent for just over four years, so just beginning the fifth year. In that time, we have been, including the new middle school, which it looks like we can stay on track for that, which we'll get to in a little bit, we have, you guys have funded eight schools. So when I came on, Odell was in the process of being built and was finished. Mount Pleasant Middle School started and was finished. Royal Oaks was started and finished. The PLC as a new building was finished. Early College of Technology, we kind of found a mobile unit and did that and was finished. We're now in the process of Hickory Ridge Elementary School and West Cabarrus High School, and then it looks like we can stay on track for the new middle school. So eight schools in four years is a stunning amount of school building. And so we're still not quite caught up, but certainly made a dent for that. So again, appreciate everything that you guys have done in that area. But again, also say that that doesn't help us in the classroom. That gives them a place to be, but it doesn't help us recruit teachers. It doesn't help teachers stay in the classroom. So I certainly do not envy you guys trying to figure out how to fund eight schools and all the other things that you fund. But ultimately, it doesn't end up going into what our main business is, which is to try to figure out how to educate 33,000 students. The rest of that list there, security cameras, electrical service at Mount Pleasant Elementary, roof replacements and HVACs, again, things that you guys are usually aware of, we're working on major projects and certainly have made some dents in that over the past few years, but the projects continue to grow. Just want to make sure that we have the link on here, so everyone knows this is the budget request. The entire document is on that link, www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us/capitalppage/3724. The entire budget document and request is there, certainly open to the public, so anybody can see that. Prioritize requests based on what the Budget Committee came up with. And then again, just to kind of hit our 10-year planning update, I kind of went over those projects in the last four years. I know we're still working to finalize, but it sounds like we have good news that hopefully that middle school can stay on track. We certainly appreciate that. We have some crowding issues at middle school, and that'll make a huge difference. Still three years out, but will make a big difference. And then I know a little further down the line is a downtown elementary school and a high school, as we continue to work on how to make those work. So again, we just want to say how much we appreciate the county's work, the county's support of the school system and attempt to at least try to understand and fund what is massive school needs. So again, we consider the county our partner, and there's a lot of places in North Carolina that can't, that don't consider that. And so we certainly appreciate that. And so we'll try to answer any questions that you guys may have for us.
Questions for Dr. Lauter. It's a lot of information.
Just as a general question. I don't think it was, it was probably two years ago, might have been three years ago at our retreat, it might have been the first one that I'd say. We had a brief discussion about school size. And you talked about, hey, a lot of districts are going to this, but here's some of the downside. Have you guys had any further discussions about that? And is that something that we should have discussions about as we continue to see our population grow, knowing, I'm not sure we can handle another four-year period where we build eight schools at the same size and capacity that we're currently doing?
So I think the answer depends on maybe specifically what you're talking about in the question. So I think at the time we discussed that, the question was specifically about high schools being bigger.
I think you're right, yes.
We have elementary schools in Cabarrus County, which are significantly bigger than most in the state and most in the country. Some people don't necessarily like that and have complained about it. It probably is not ideal to have a 1,000-person elementary school. But when you are in an area that is growing the way we are, I think what we've proven is that we can do that, we can be successful with them. I would say it's probably a better-sized school to have, like, a Royal Oaks is one of the last, we did more like 650, 750 is probably better. I don't think we can build what is more like an average, as much smaller elementary schools, 300 or 400, but those are in areas that are absolutely not growing. So I think we, long before I was the superintendent, have kind of already made the trade-off to say our schools are going to be probably bigger, especially at elementary and middle school. High school, we still, you know, we just built an 1,850 student, we're about to build it, finish building 1,850 students. There are maybe, I don't know, 25 schools in the state that are bigger than that, that's an estimation, but not very many. And those are, your Charlotte Mecklenburgs has some that are over 3,000. I think Wake County has a few that are over 3,000. But it's pretty rare even to have any that are at 2,000. So I'd say we're pretty big. And I would not recommend that we went a whole lot bigger than almost 2,000 students, because you just, you just get very impersonal when you get to that point. And we would be far out of the norm if we're building schools that are much bigger than that. So again, I think we're already out of that norm. In the other two levels, we're probably at the norm at high school. And I think we've done a pretty good job with that, and we have certainly said, yes, we can build those a little bit bigger and try to be as efficient as possible, because three, 400-student schools is significantly more expensive to run than an elementary school with 1,000 or 1,100 kids in it. And so while, you know, in an ideal world, we probably wouldn't go that big, it's very doable, and it's the only way to keep up with growth, which you guys have certainly challenged, and we are, and have done a pretty good job trying to get there.
And I'd just like to comment, if I may, that whether we build the school, a high school, for example, for 1,200 or 1,400, because of the challenges with building additional schools for the growth, we are letting those schools, we need to let them go up to 1,800 and 1,900 students. So while Central Cabarrus currently, Northwest Cabarrus some years ago, are not acknowledged as 1,800-student schools, we have them up in that 1,800, 1,900 range. And Central is still there for another year. So you just need to kind of balance, you know, what you're thinking about. Yes, we don't want them to get that big, but that's the necessity. So.
Okay. Any other questions? We thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay, so I think now we go back to general board discussion that we paused a little earlier. Well, from where I'm sitting is the next one, that one. Did that fix yours?
Yes.
Yeah, we're trying to get some heat in here.
All right, we ready?
We are ready when you are.
Okay. Let me just make sure we're picking up where we left off. Yes. All right. So yeah, this is actually a good transition. In your packets, your binder, you should have a five-year plan that we presented, or that was handed out last night in your inside pocket. But then I also, in case you don't have it, I also brought hard copies too. So we're looking at two different five-year plans here. I have the one, I have one that is balanced at the 72-cent rate, just because that's what we just based our, you know, budget presentation on. But then I do have a five-year plan that notes, one with a 2-cent tax increase. So if you look at the top highlighted, you can see the 74 cents in 2020, and that can be the five-year plan that we focus on for the purpose of the rest of this discussion, because really, major projects, major revenues, expenditures are consistent amongst both plans, it's just the additional property tax increase. So I can, we can go high level through the five-year plan. You know, throughout the presentation, Susan, Lauren, and myself have touched on a lot of our primary revenues and expenditure categories. So for instance, if you're just looking in, do I need to explain the five-year plan and how it works? Does everyone feel comfortable with it? Okay. So again, it is showing the increase or decrease from year over year from our FY19 adopted budget, just for reference. So you're seeing in that FY20 column, everyone has a copy of the 74 cent. Okay. You are seeing the additional property tax revenue that we mentioned earlier in our PowerPoint presentation. You are seeing the sales tax increase of 2% that we've already discussed. If you scroll on down with permits and fees, and then our sales and services, I touched on register of deeds fees increasing, our building inspections fees remaining flat at this point, just due to weather delays. And we're seeing still a trend in an increase in inspections, but more of the trend going from commercial to more residential. So they're not as, you know, substantial inspection revenue that we're getting from those projects. And our ambulance fees, you can follow that down in the 2020 column, you'll see we're projecting a 4.5% increase over our FY19 budget. So that's an additional $266,000. And then kind of following back with what we presented earlier in the evening, our interest on investments, we are proposing to increase that by additional $500,000, just based on what we're collecting so far this year. Are you, is everyone following me? I'm in that other category now. Okay. Our Board of Election program fees, an additional $90,000. Lottery proceeds is increasing by the additional $300,000 that I already touched on earlier. Medicaid Hold Harmless Revenues, we are proposing to increase to an additional $500,000. Currently, that budget in FY19 is $2 million. We're proposing to take it to $2.5 million, based on just the past two years of actual revenue we've collected there. We felt comfortable adjusting for that. And then our new positions, that's tied to our, mainly our DHS reimbursement that we're getting on those positions. Our matching grants, this was reduced from last year's budget. So in order to put it back in this year, I'm showing it as an increase, just going from prior year to current year. Our HCCBG funding, we are projecting an increase in those revenues, so I did kind of want to highlight that, as well as our deputy reimbursement that we get from the municipalities. And a lot of that is just based on the salary study and the implementation that took place from the public safety study and the salary table conversion. Our officers are now making more, therefore, we're asking for more reimbursement back.
Question?
Sure.
Question. On the deputy reimbursement?
Yes.
Now, this is money that the municipalities give back to the county?
Correct.
Is that right? They give it back to the county?
We bill them.
Okay. Well, my train of thought just left me. But it seems like that we're funding that through the sheriff's office already. Is that right? And then they give it, the county's paid, is it paid twice?
There's an expense in it-
This is the revenue.
Yeah.
So the revenue is going to match the expense.
Yeah, okay. That's what I was saying, is are we, it's just really washing out, really?
Except that the county does pay for the first two deputies for Harrisburg and one for Midland. Is that correct?
It is one for Midland, yes.
And one, two for Mount Pleasant.
Mount Pleasant, yes.
Those are over and above. We pay for those, the other ones, they are the first.
Now, does the schools have any part of paying that part for the deputies? Because I was understanding that, like the old AT Allen for years ago on 601, I think whenever the principal was there, Ms. Fats, I think she was telling me it cost her like $8,000 a year to have a deputy out there in the morning and the evening. And so if the school is paying it, and then we're paying the deputies, and then they're giving it back, it seems to me like that there might be some crossover there, if that's the way it really is. I mean, I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Typically, and I'll ask the sheriff to verify this for me, but there is a resource officer in every school. The resource officer is for, Mr. Paul, you may help, the resource officer is inside the school.
Right.
If there's traffic control, sometimes they may go out there, but not very often. Mostly, it's that beat, it's the person that's in that district is coming there to help, or they may have to bring somebody else in. And there is a charge, I think there's an hourly fee for that.
Okay, so that really could be separate than this, then. You've got the outside deputy, and then you've got the school resource officer.
Correct.
So it's, well, I just, you know, it's sort of confusing to me. I asked Pamela earlier about it, because when I seen that, I said, well, you know, if we're giving the schools this money, and we giving them that money, and then we're giving it to the sheriff's office too, and then the municipality is giving it back to the county, it seems like it's just sort of a circle there. It might, got everybody royally confused.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Anyway, if in fact, the schools paid the 8,000 for AT Allen, well, where did the schools get the money? It come from us, right? And the deputies, where did they get, where do they get the money? It comes from us. But if the schools give it, they're paying it from the money that we gave them, and then the municipalities jumps in and says, well, we're going to pay you a certain portion of that back, which is referred to as deputy reimbursement. It's confusing to me. Maybe I'm just making more out of it than it is, but it's confusing to me. It's only 165,000, no big deal. But the principal's what's got me puzzled.
We will, we will confirm that. I know there is officers that come in and work overtime, so that's additional, over and above what's budgeted. So we can get the sheriff to give us clarification on that.
Right. But on the deputy reimbursement, that is strictly the sheriff's department providing deputy services within municipalities. It has nothing to do with the schools.
Right.
Then there's the school resource officers that are in a different category, and then there's traffic, which is another category. So it's, it's in three different areas.
And-
I mean, it's just like a church. There's churches that when they let out, the traffic is horrendous. So a church pays for a deputy or police officer to be their direct traffic. That's what's happening at Mary Frances Wall. When you're on 601 and everything's letting out, you're never getting out of that school with all the traffic. So they pay to have somebody there, because there isn't a stop sign, there isn't a traffic signal, there isn't anything to help the traffic, other than a deputy bless their hearts, standing out there in a reflective vest and a wand going, and hoping it's not bad weather, or when the sun's not up yet, as is the case for many of them. So it's the same type of thing, they're just paying for this service. Similar, but different. You've got police at athletic events, and they get paid from a different pot of money. So, and I think the history of the county is trying to make sure that everything is documented, so that if you want to look and see how much law enforcement costs, you have all the cost identified, not just specifically county costs. And we've done that in many, many different areas. Who is it? Somebody pays property tax, and then we give it back to them. But we want to make sure that we, we have a true transaction on the books.
Incentive grant.
I don't think it was incentive grant, there was something else that we've done over the years. There's different things, and it seems silly when you say that, but at the same time, then you can identify true cost of doing business and make sure that we're accounting for everything, as you two, three, four, five really like to do. But it does get very confusing, you are correct.
Yes, it does. So moving to the expenditure side, we'll just kind of keep going down that FY20 column. So you can see the new position request, the 23 proposed that we discussed earlier, and those associated costs around 1.3, that's salary and benefits for all those positions, retirement, everything is included in that number. The salary study, which was presented a few weeks ago at the work session, that would be the cost of implementing that in FY20's budget at 225,000. Other salary adjustments, such as other pays and vacation payouts, we budgeted at 326,000 to cover those adjustments made throughout the year.
Those are all the same numbers, other than the tax, the 2-cent tax. So can we just talk?
Oh, sure. Yeah, we can, yeah, let's speed it up. I like it.
On top of the-
So if you want, if I can, oh, one second. All right. So really, the major difference on this plan versus the one you're seeing in your budget book is the 2-cent property tax increase, which you're seeing at the top of your plan and also referred to on the slide. So that will result in an additional $4,702,134 in property tax revenue. I do want to mention that, you know, the budget's a living and breathing document, so we already have a good bit of changes to present on Thursday with you, but we have to have a cutoff period so we can produce the book. So based on the most recent assessed valuation update, that finance works in conjunction with our tax office, it would result in an additional $1,277,038 in additional tax revenue. Again, these changes weren't proposed in your budget document, because they came after we had already, we had already compiled the document. So with that being said, if you were to take the assessed valuation update, and then the proposed additional 2-cent tax increase, it would result in around $5,979,172 in available funds to use for FY20. So what we are proposing for FY20 to use these additional tax revenue funds to address the growing capital and deferred maintenance needs for our school systems and our county operations. So if you tackle those kind of one-time projects and deferred maintenance projects, which you've heard from both school systems, and you've heard from the county and our critical needs and the growing needs, that would tackle it for FY20, with FY21 using this additional revenue to address current expense costs for the projected school openings. So that being the new elementary school and the high school coming online. So I do think it's kind of helpful, just to refer back to the five-year plan, you can see on your front page with your revenues, you can see with revaluation hitting and the growth that we are projecting for revaluation, and also just our normal growth in property tax. And just, we've kind of kept consistent growth in our sales tax and our other revenue sources. But really, kind of what's telling is, if you flip to the back page and you see when all of the construction costs and the debt service starts to hit for the construction of the middle school and the new courthouse, and then when the operations start to hit once the courthouse is up and running, and then also the current expense funding, how the revow is pretty, is getting absorbed, the additional revenue from revow is getting absorbed with current expense and debt service payments. So with that being said, we- So with that being said, we, in your packets, we have a proposed list of, for FY twenty, those one-time capital and deferred maintenance projects that we could address in FY twenty.
And again, these are, these are ones that we pulled off a priority list from the two school systems and from us. If that's, that list is not necessarily set in stone, we can massage that list, move it around, whatever. We just know that there's a finite amount of money there. And as Kristen said, next year, we have it to spend on one-time, one-time items, which is deferred and capital and that kind of stuff, because the following year, in twenty, twenty-one, those operational costs for opening that high school and that elementary school are going to consume just about every bit of it. And then the revow growth will be debt service on the courthouse in the.
In the school.
Yeah, in the middle. So if you want to talk about the other projects.
Sure.
Good, that some of the school board is still here, so they can hear some of those projects. And we didn't really talk about what was already in the current. So you've seen that, so some of that, some of that, the Mount Pleasant Elementary School was already in there and everything else.
Sure.
Okay, good.
And the list actually kind of touches on some that we're proposing a fund with capital reserve funds as part of our CIP. So hopefully, as we're going through it, it'll kind of trigger some past conversations that we've had. So you have two handouts here. You have a summary list that is on just a regular piece of paper, and then you have a more extensive list on a legal-sized sheet of paper. Does everyone have those copies? Okay. So what's in the PowerPoint presentation is the summary list. Because if you're taking the additional tax revenue with the two cent tax increase of four million, seven hundred and two thousand, one thirty-four, and then if we were to update our value, our assessed valuation to the, to an additional one million, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand and thirty-eight dollars, that gives us the five point nine that you would have to spend on one-time or deferred maintenance projects. So the list, the smaller piece of paper, is kind of just a high-level summary list, but you can see the more extensive list on the other page. So on the summary page, we have activity bus. So originally, Cabarrus County Schools requested three activity buses to be funded for FY twenty. Currently, in the CIP, we have funding proposed to fund two of those buses, so this would be to fund the remaining third bus out of their original request. The next one is our security camera upgrades, and that's system-wide. So we already have funding slated in our capital reserve funds for the FY twenty CIP for a portion of that project, I believe it's like four hundred and fifteen thousand. And this would be to fund the remaining portion of that project that was requested.
Am I sounding good so far?
Okay. So the next I have on the list would be a roof replacement at C.C. Griffin Middle School, which we have costing one million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. And then for Connapolis City, the capital project, again, based on priority that we've heard from the school system, would be the renovations or upgrades at A.L. Brown Cannon Gymnasium. For deferred maintenance for Cabarrus County Schools, I have the new timekeeper server on there at thirty thousand, which they actually did mention in their PowerPoint presentation. But if you go to the more extensive list, you can see other needs that show up there for the new timekeeper server. So if you didn't choose to fund that, there's furniture and fixtures and equipment, replacing risers and acoustic panels, repairing and replacing school band equipment. So those are just the type of projects that would fall under that category. So for capital outlay, the facilities maintenance division for Cabarrus County Schools, I did pull this off of what was ranked from the school budget committee meetings. So I pulled the top four that I could, that I could find from that PowerPoint, which were the flooring replacement and abatement at Northwest Cabarrus Middle, flooring and replacement and abatement at Concord High School, carpet replacement at Concord, and then the pedestrian walkway from Highway forty-nine to the existing sidewalk at Central Cabarrus. Any questions so far? Okay. And then for the county capital projects, that just options to use with the available funds, would be land banking at two million. So this has been a CIP that we've had on our radar for multiple years, and it kind of falls to the lower priority list, just based on, you know, needing to replace existing facilities, improving our parks. So this would be allocating funds to start reserving for land banking efforts. The operations center, you heard Lauren mention, to fund a portion of that through the FY twenty CIP. This would be to fund that whole project. So when we met with Kyle, he had kind of divided the project into two, and so this would be picking up the remaining fleet portion to move the fleet division into the operations center. So that would be around eight hundred and fifteen thousand. A sheriff radio communication tower at a hundred and sixty thousand, and then a portion of the Camp Spencer vending machine building in Overlook. Again, we have partial funding already slated in FY twenty to be funded through capital reserve funds, part of the CIP process. So this would be to pick up the additional cost associated with that project and just go ahead and complete these projects all at once, instead of having them be in phases. So in management and Kyle worked to rank these in highest priority needs based on the county's request. So you can see on, if you kind of subtotal it down, your additional property tax revenue is five point nine. These potential projects are five million, eight hundred and three thousand, four hundred and twenty-four, so we'd still have available balance of around a hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven forty-eight. Any questions?
I've got one, it was back up the top, and Chris or Barry or I guess Laura, they were, I didn't see Cindy back there. Can you just tell me real quick, the fire academy, it's two million dollars, is that a standalone building? Or what are we doing, what is that?
So just kind of. That's been a request for years now, it's kind of ebb and flowed. So to be honest with you, at one point, I think there was a discussion of maybe even like county facilities being there, and so I can't speak to exactly where that's at now. There's still a, I think, a want and a desire to be there and have a, you know, a facility that works for that. But I think there's been two or three plans for that, some involving the county and some not, that maybe somebody else can speak to a little bit.
Yeah, that's correct. It just, the schools have their program at Concord High School.
Right.
The public safety, I think that's, is it a public safety's program? So they were needing some additional facilities there. The county has had a public safety facility, training facility on our books for almost ten years now, probably. And we just, we thought we had a location, and then it didn't work, and then the next thing you know, Rowan Cabarrus built theirs up north. But it's still on our books, that we're trying to do it. So at one time, when we were looking at Concord High School, we were looking, was there enough room to combine a county along with the schools? And we don't think there is enough to put them both there. So I think they would still need to be two facilities. But ours was, it was a full-blown facility with classroom space, which now we have some classroom space across the street, we may not have to build that. Skid pads and towers and all the other stuff, we do not have those facilities available to our public safety people here now. And they don't have any for their program at the, at the high school either.
Okay, so.
Our facility was about fifteen million dollars.
But what are we getting for the two million dollars? What is that number, what are we doing with that?
Where, where is that?
It's up at the top.
Oh, I don't know.
I'm looking for it in the capital.
That's the one that was at the high school, right?
Yeah, like I said, I think we've kind of, you know, ebb and flowed a little bit with what that plan was going to be, and I'm not exactly sure where that is, except for it's still a, what I would say, a great program that they've kind of piecemeal, you know, facility stuff.
No, it's a fantastic program. I guess my question was generated mostly, I mean, if we're going to start checking off projects as we go down, A, are these projects that your board has sort of identified? It sounded like they, we pulled them off of a list that you guys, you know, from the budget committee, but just making sure that that's the case.
The other option is divide the dollar figures up, and then they can.
Yeah, I mean, I guess just making sure we know what we're getting for the dollars that we're being spent.
Yeah, and sometimes, again, I have to see the document, because sometimes what happens is, you know, the needs or the list is so long that we don't, you don't bring the whole list over here because it may have two hundred and fifty things on it. So you'll just try to say, well, we'll take the top thirty-six. So I'm not sure if this is in the top thirty-six category or secondary category, but it tends to fall in one of those, if that makes sense, and that may be, I'm not sure where they pulled it from.
Yeah, I pulled it from the proposed budget document that you presented to your board, and the capital projects were ranked just in how they were submitted to us, but the deferred maintenance and the capital outlay were ranked based on the school budget committee meetings, so.
And again, there's been a little bit of discussion where sometimes it may be this priority, but if we were teaming up with the county, that priority may change. As Mike said, I think that's kind of not necessarily the plan now, it's kind of moved a little bit there. But the need is certainly still there for, you know, what I would say would be not even state-of-the-art, but kind of what it takes to run those academies, and it's just not there. They've just tried to kind of figure it out and had a lot of stuff donated to them. Used mobile unit the last time I was out there.
So on page fifty-five, which I'm not going to know what that is, but.
The big book?
Yeah, and no, in this little book. So you had had several things below the line, which was the security cameras, the electrical service at Mount Pleasant Elementary, roof replacements, and HVAC systems below the line. So it looks like two of those things are on here with the security and a roof replacement.
Right, the line was just to say, you guys have already committed to those than we did. And the other ones were in priority behind that, and that's what Pam was just showing me, that a couple of those are now, you guys are, I guess, proposing to put on there, which were cameras and electrical service and one roof replacement, I think.
Now, am I missing the electrical service?
Electrical, that's already.
Oh, that's already in there, got, okay, okay, so that's, hit most of those, okay. And so to the point about the supplements, which I know we had a five-year plan when, back when we started, that we were going to address that, but as we've addressed it, other counties have gone up. So we're always playing catch-up from that perspective. But when you hear eight schools being built, it's not like, it's not like there's not money being spent, and we've got to have places for the kids to go. At the same time, we have to have teachers to teach the kids who go.
Right.
So it's a really difficult situation, and I don't know, and I guess the supplement piece, we will discuss at a later time. Okay, all right. So, I mean, I think we all hear you. Well, I mean, I'm not in a hurry, but I mean, we all hear you and we all understand that. It's just unfortunately, and I understand that this being the one-time money, so you can't put it here because we're not going to have that on a continuing basis. So I certainly understand that, I think it's a great thing to hit as many of these things as we can, while we can. Because if we wait till we have extra money without an increase, these things are never going to get done. And we're just going to dig a bigger hole.
If I could throw something out there, now I'm going to go completely blank of, I did just went completely blank. So, thank you, I read my mind. Kelly and I have worked over the last, say, two years, and, you know, we talk about the deferred maintenance, and we talk about following the supplemental supplements and all this other stuff. But if you look in the continuation budget, we have addressed everything that we have a hole in the past to prevent a problem in the future. So we have a funding mechanism, every time they add acreage, and we add more money to grounds. Every time they add square footage, we have building and grounds money going in. Every time they have a new teacher, we add funding for the computer. Every time they have a new student, we add instructional materials for the new student and computers for that. We used to fund the computers for the school systems through capital, and we would buy the computers. That causes a problem four years down the road when you have to replace them. So for the high school and the elementary school, we put in reoccurring lease money to prevent that problem. So we have plugged many holes. We plugged deferred maintenance, we're up at nine hundred thousand dollars, which gets us twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars worth of projects. So we've stopped the bleed, and we've done a remarkable job with that. It's just going back and taking care of the past of what's happened to us. So, you know, I sat through the House Bill ten thirty-one meeting with Wake County, with several different other counties throughout there, and to sit there, and I shared all these spreadsheets with them when we were going through this, because we were talking about transparency and how we fund everything. And the biggest thing Wake County talks about is they don't really have a capital problem. They always fight over current expense. Well, when I explained how we do continuation and that we don't let them get in the hole, they looked at me like I had three heads, like, what? Well, I said, well, why wouldn't the world do not cover the cost to continue to operate? So I think we've got something good going here, it's just we don't have enough money. But we've, we've worked together over the last three years to stop the future. So we're not going to cause the hole to get bigger, but we got to dig out of the hole. And I think this option with this two cents increase will make an impact in that hole as far as the deferred maintenance is concerned, because those are some of the things that we've had in Trago for years that we vote, and 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 it's thirty-six, and it's forty, and it's thirty-nine, and it's whatever.
No Mount Pleasant electrical has been on there for at least three or four years.
So, I mean, there are things that we're, could address with this issue that will help take care of some of these things, and we're whittling away at them, and we may not whittle as fast as we want to, but we, I think we've done a really good job of stopping the bleed and trying to go back and address when we have money. But with all the growth, it just becomes, you know, we get to continuation, and the only thing we can touch in expansion is the teacher supplements. When we go to Connapolis City Schools, we can't even come close to touching continuation as far as their requests are concerned. So we're, I think we're doing a good job with the money that we have and the process that we're working on. So we've stopped the bleed, we've just got to get to a point where we can dig back out of those holes. And I think this is a great option to dig out some of the, some of the big ticketed items that Chuck isn't going to be able to shift his money around and go maybe eat a thirty-five thousand dollar project because something came in lower. And when you pick up those big dollar projects, you could knock a couple of things off the plate, and it continually makes it better, not great, but better.
Right. And I certainly was trying to say that before, is even with teacher supplement, these guys really have worked hard to not go backwards. But, but again, I would just say our teacher supplement deficit is a, is huge, you know. So it's just, we're just really, really far behind. And until, you know, so we're not far, we're not going further behind, but when you increase the teacher supplement by a quarter of a percent, which is kind of what it's been the last year or two, then it'll take twelve years to get to the state average, all right? So we're just, we're just not making a dent there. And it is our number-one recruiting tool, our number-one retention tool. Like, I think I told you guys the last time, if I had the Mecklenburg County supplement today, then I'd have seven hundred teachers that would apply to Cabarrus County. We may not want to hire them all, but I'd have seven hundred applicants tomorrow that I don't have today because that's just where we are competitively, so.
And the bad thing about that, and Commissioner Honeycutt spoke about this, is when we move, they move.
That's right.
And so they keep raising the bar, and you said twelve years just to meet the state average, but.
As if nobody was an increase.
If the state don't move.
That's right.
But if they move, then, you know, it's just a trickle effect. And so it's just, we're always trying to play catch-up. But I have a question for, maybe for Mike, for county manager. Mike, whenever we finish this fiscal year on June the thirtieth, you know, we always have a residual leftover. Are we going to be able to use some of those funds to dig deeper in this deferred maintenance list?
That won't happen.
Pardon?
Yes, sir.
So that's what we plan, yeah, so we're going to try that, in other words, we're talking about five point nine million one-time things. But now if we can dig into deeper on these things as well.
Those are one-time, that's one-time money too.
Yeah, it would be, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I thought so, but I just wanted to see that we try to do what we can over there.
Sure.
I had one other quick question. But first, I have a vague recollection that back thirteen and fourteen, we were, we had a big push, we being when I was on your board, to go back and do all the security entrances and secure the schools. But I noticed on this list that Mount Pleasant High School is listed, did that one just? Did that one just not, just never got to that one?
Yeah, so what, they prioritized that list again through, so all the elementary schools have it. And then different, the school facility really determines the cost of that, right? So at Hickory Ridge High, for example, you can put one up pretty, you enter the door there, you can put one up there for a minimal amount of money comparatively. But at J.M. Robinson, you know, where the door is here and the front office is there, it'll cost a quarter of a million dollars, half of it, because you'll have to change the whole entrance. Same thing for Mount Pleasant. So when you stick, when you walk in the door and you can go 12 different ways, then you have to build a much different structure. Some of the schools in Hickory Ridge is a good example where it's pretty easy to just put a door that's there on the other side of that. So those became prioritized of, of doing them by, wow, we can do 80% of them. Then they get to costs that are really cost prohibitive. And those are the ones that are left, the ones that have multiple entrances.
How many or what?
I, I know there's at least two or three middle schools and two or three high. I should know off the, it's either five or six, but it's pretty much the ones, again, where you have four hallways right when you walk in the front door.
So the amount there for Security Vestibule at Mount Pleasant High School is $56,870. And from a purely selfish point of view, I would like to see that one added because there's still available balance. And it's on the list. I didn't pull it and put it on the list. But I would say, from a purely selfish point of view, I would like to see that added. My other comment would be, and this may be that it's a year too soon. I don't have the answer for that. But I would like for everybody to consider the Mount Pleasant Library, that we have gotten multiple requests to do something. And I'm not saying that there's money in this with everything else that we can address that. But that is an issue that has been brought to us numerous times. And I don't want us to forget that particular issue.
Well, I brought up on, it's a little earlier and that was sort of in the back of my mind. I just wanted to get a handle on, because we do get, we hear that a lot, but I want to make sure I understand, and we briefly touched on it, operations versus capital, whatever. But we can save that for some general discussion.
Representatives from Mount Pleasant coming to speak to you in June. And remember, we have the, we are purchasing land for the library in the western side of the county where there are no services. So. But yeah, I, I think we are, we are deficient in libraries and senior centers as well. And that's the whole point, so.
And let me ask another question about, since you mentioned the Fire Academy. There were a group of people, both school and county, that were evaluating that site. Has there been a report on that?
I think that somebody evaluated it. Didn't somebody look at that site about two or three years ago?
I'm sorry, which site?
The Concord High School.
The Concord High.
To see if, if the two facilities would.
The carpentry program will be moving to West Cabarrus. So that building has three extremely large classrooms. And you would not need a mobile unit for classroom space. The question would be how to store the vehicles and the possibility of a climbing tower. And I have no idea what the report came back as, as that's been a few years, as you said. But I'm not certain that it's still over $2 million, so.
So I can ask Bobby Smith and Steve Langer to update us on Thursday when they're here.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think the county's facility was more like 20 or 30 acres because of the large skid pads and all the other stuff. But we'll have Bobby talk, talk about it.
Because our county facility also included not just a tower, but a burn building, which we were trying to stay a little bit away from houses with that. That's one, one of the criteria for finding the site.
I mean, and that's what I was after. Everything else on the list, you know, it kind of tells you exactly what you're doing. Well, that just says Fire Academy. I didn't know what that meant, so.
I did find the sheet for the Fire Academy, if y'all wanted any information off of that. The, the starting is 2.068 million. And it's saying for, needs rental space. It's currently dependent on renting space for storage of equipment and struggles with consistent proper training areas. Many of these operational costs and conflicts could be reduced by providing proper facilities on-site. I did find the one on Fire Services and that one is starting at 4.9 million.
That's been reduced because it was, it was in the double, well into the double fingers.
It was. They reduced a number of the aspects of that because there are other facilities they can use and so they took some things out.
Yeah.
So again, the, again, the list we created, we tried to pull from the priorities, but it can be, those, those projects can be moved around however you so choose.
Were there any other questions on the five-year plan that is showing the additional tax revenue? I have it showing at the top with the two-cent tax increase. And then on the expenditure side, I have it showing as a contribution to the capital reserve fund, help fund some of these projects. So that's why if you follow it all the way down, you're seeing that it comes back to zero, so. And my last slide is just to note that, again, we'll be coming back on Thursday with already some final changes that we have to the budget, one of those being the assessed valuation update that we have, so. Are there any questions? All righty. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Yes. Well, we've had a, a long evening and covered a lot of ground. And so unless there are objections, then I would say that we recess until 4 o'clock on Thursday afternoon to pick up where we left off. And thank you for your time.